Good afternoon, everybody.
Oh.
Oh, it's so good, Nick. It's so good. I know it's not, it's not Sicilian. I get it. Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually today is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Before we start with the regular portion of our meeting, I've been a little bit under the weather, so Nick and I are going to sort of hand off to each other more often if, if I, if I'm not, if I'm struggling or something. So expect Nick to be, to be doing some heavy lifting here.
To be grumpy?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm never grumpy, so you know.
Wake up, Nick. Come on.
Okay, here we go. So our first item this evening is OG Island Investments LLC for final coast, oh, final coastal site plan for a new single-family residence within 100 feet of the coast on a 29,073 square foot property at 40 Westway. It's in the R20 coastal overlay zone and flood hazard overlay zone. This application has an extension, but at the moment, available, but at the moment, it's a must-aside by 6/12. Seated on this application are Albin, Jones for McRae, Lo, Yesky, Wells. If I might ask, and Noel, would you mind allowing seating to Nick? The seating so that he is able to make a motion in, 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 on, in my stead?
I'm happy to do that.
Great. Thank you very much. So Nick, you are now seated again on this application, and we're off and running, Mr. Haslam.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Chip Haslam for the applicant. With me is our entire, most of our team. If there are any questions that you have for them, I won't ask you to have them become panelists, but they're available if there are questions or comments. We did receive the revised staff comments from Bianca and read through them. We also attended your briefing yesterday, and I think we've covered all the issues that were raised in prior staff reports and by the commission at the last hearing. Those being in particular, we resolved the issue with DEEP and DPW, and we agreed to the recommendation of DEEP as to conditional notes on the, on any approval. The CAM application is in fact incomplete. The only section on page three of the CAM application that applies here is the general requirements. So there's no issue there, I don't believe. We revised the landscape plan to add a coastal buffer along the, the seawall. And we also expanded upon the EMAC commentary. And I also, a question was asked yesterday whether or not there was any work that was going to be done to the existing dock that was part of this application. The answer to that is, is no. I think those are all the issues and, and our comments that were raised yesterday, our questions. Anything else in the commission?
Mr. Lo, you have your hand up.
I do. Mr. Haslam, you just mentioned that you expanded on the EMAC issue. Could you expand orally now? Because I, I haven't seen that.
Yes, I asked David Moore to do that. He prepared that narrative from Grandoff Architects. David, could you raise your hand and be recognized?
Got him. Matthew Grant, right? That's whose hand is up.
No, David Moore.
All right, that's not whose hand is up. It's Matthew Grant who had, well, maybe he's masquerading, you know how that.
Possibly, yes. Yep. Worth a try.
Worth a shot. Okay. So if you don't recognize this person, let me know. Mr. Grant, if you would unmute and turn on your, okay, there, you recognize these people, Mr. Haslam?
I can't see anybody. Yes, there you are.
Okay. All right, okay.
So I amended the energy efficiency narrative to, we, in the space of time between our first submission and now, or last week, we had time to develop wall sections and also we hired a mechanical engineer who informed us about the mechanical systems we're using. First of all, on the mechanical systems, we are not utilizing a gas boiler. It's all going to be energy-efficient heat pumps. So that's off the table. And then I think there, we included a little diagram of our wall section which shows an exterior insulation which will act as kind of a blanket over the entire building envelope. It's very, very energy efficient. And also we added a, a, a double roof assembly. So what that allows is for, when the sun is beating down on the roof, there are essentially two roof surfaces. The top roof surface is directly hit by the sun. Then there's a spacer between that and a secondary roof, and that creates a kind of a chimney effect which will mitigate the, the solar heat gain effect on the secondary roof. So that's also a very efficient approach to the building envelope. Let's see what else. We're utilizing ducted mini-split systems which reduces the length of the ductwork within the house, which also increases the efficiency of the heating system. And then additionally, we are using radiant heat in the flooring, which is 25% more efficient than a ducted heating system. So that's, that, that's in addition to what we had originally presented.
Any questions? Mr. Wells, Mr. Lo?
I'll, I'll turn it over to Arne.
No, I mean, big improvement, really like you're moving to heat pumps. Installation looks great, mini-splits. It's all good. I mean, you always have to query, but you already gave the answer, you know, because it's sort of obvious about solar, but, you know, the applicant decide whether they, they want or not. I mean, that would be a home run, but, you know, balls in your court and appreciate the improvements you made.
Okay. And just to double check, do, we do have sign-off on that new landscape buffer from, from environmental? From the environmental folks, from conservation?
Yes, I believe we do.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the commission on this application? Okay, does anyone from the public wish to comment on this application at 40 Westway? 40 Westway in Old Greenwich. Please raise your virtual hand if you want to comment on 40 Westway. Whoever needs to turn off their background. Okay, there's, I don't see any comments from the public. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
Nope.
All right, seeing no objection. Mr. McRae, I hereby declare the, the application is closed and request that you make a motion for us.
40 Westway Final Coastal Site Plan Special Permit PLPZ 2024-122. Applicant is seeking demolition of existing dwelling, instructed in single-family dwelling, stormwater, and site improvements landscaping in a swimming pool on a 28,250 square foot property located in the R20 coastal overlay and flood hazard overlay zones per Section 611 of the BZR and Sections 22A90 and 22A96 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Whereas the property straddles the AE13 and VE16 flood zones, the commission finds that DEP issued comments dated 5/27/25 indicating conditions on the proposal. Conservation issued comments dated 5/15/20 indicating recommendations to the proposal. Zoning issued comments indicating no issues with the application. Sewer Division issued comments on 5/15/25 requesting the applicant submit a signed letter acknowledging receipt of their P&amp;Z comments. DPW Engineering issued comments dated 5/15/25 indicating receipt of prior zoning permit. EMAC issued comments on 6/18/24 indicated, 5/18/24 indicating recommendations to the proposal. And Wetlands issued a permit questionnaire on 3/24/25 indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. Per DEP recommendations, the applicant shall test the admitted soils below each of the seven gallery systems to confirm drain rates are consistent with the updated drainage manuals guidance, and results should be reported to the Department of Works Engineering Division for prior approval, approval prior to completing the installations. Per conservation comments, proposed stockpiles within the flood zone should be confined to the AE13 zone. And prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall provide a comprehensive soils erosion plan reflecting the DEP SE and SC guidelines effective 3/30/24. Per sewer division comment, the applicant has submitted a letter dated 5/19/25 acknowledging the comments, and the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second for that motion? And again, it's the regular members.
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. Lo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five nothing. Thank you very much, Mr. Haslam and Mr. Grant at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. That one. Alrighty. Now we go to the second application, which is Laurelton Residence LLC for a final site plan for a proposed conversion of an existing nursing home to a multifamily residence containing 17 dwelling units on a 4.24 acre property located at 1188 King Street in the RA4 Zone. Hello, Madam Siska. If you would kindly proceed.
Thank you, Chair Albin. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Andrea Siska. I represent Laurelton Residences LLC, the applicant with respect to the property located at 1188 King Street in Greenwich. The application before this commission is for a final, a final site plan seeking approval to convert the existing building, which was a former nursing home into a multifamily residence, a multifamily dwelling or building pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 8-2R. As we understand the statute, it provides for an as-of-right conversion, provided that the site plan conforms with regulations. We would submit to the commission that the site plan does in fact comply. We've reviewed the comments and believe that at this time, the, the application can be granted or approved with conditions for any, to address any of the outstanding comments. And, and certainly I can address certain of them if the commission would like, or if the commission would prefer me to address the ones that the commission is focused on. I'm glad to do that as well.
Folks, what would you prefer? You want to just hit your, hit with your questions? It's usually more efficient.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yep, okay. So Nick, well, you want to lead off?
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm completely understanding. We have a drainage exemption for the work, because you're really not changing any, most of the impervious surface. The buildings' alterations have already been approved by ARC, but for a previous project type, it was a renovation of the building for, back to a nursing home. But the same, same alterations are for this project, the conversion. Is that correct?
The plans were approved actually for an assisted living facility for an interior, interior renovation. We understand that with the final site plan, we'll have to submit once it's approved, or when it's approved by the commission, we'd have to submit that to the building department, at which point, if there's any amendment required, we, we would have to obviously comply.
Okay, so you already have permit, building permits for the assisted living facility?
That's correct.
Okay.
Patrick, do you have a comment on this?
Yeah, I think, Ms. Siska, I think what Mr. McRae is asking about is that the roof and the siding changes were dealt with in an earlier ARC application, right? And that's, so that, that has been, what's, what's out there or what's going in now is what was approved by the ARC.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So actually, co-compliant windows, doors, et cetera, et cetera, were all part of the original assisted living. Okay.
So there is consistency, correct? Just, we're confirming that there's consistency.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm not a contractor, so I haven't, I haven't been out there to confirm consistency with the plans, but my understanding is that there have been inspections that, that the building has passed various inspections at this point. And so as I understand it, there is consistency between the plans and what's being built, and to the extent that obviously, in order to obtain the CO, that there needs to be any amendment to the permits that were originally filed, obviously, that would be done.
So my question then is for Patrick as a follow-up question, sorry, Arne. Amendment to the permits, would that mean coming back to us or not?
No.
Because they're only, because this got permitted as an assisted.
Right.
Without realizing that it needed to come to us. And then now we're approving it, and if it has to change, it's the permits only that would change.
It would be the permits, and the permits would reflect the use as you, the commission, would approve it now. So if you move this forward, it would, they would go back and amend the permits to say the project is for a multifamily, not an assisted any longer. And then any cost related to work that is changed over the scope that's already been proposed would get caught with the building permits.
Okay. And then, of course, it doesn't have a zoning permit from that original iteration. It only, it's only going to have it now?
I'm sorry, can you ask me that again?
The zoning permit.
Yeah, it would have a, it would have a zoning enforcement permit.
Right.
And does it have one from the previous iteration?
It does, it has, it has a zoning permit for interior work and the exterior work, but not for the change of use.
That's what I kind of remembered from when we, when we first saw this. Okay. So now it does have to go back for a zoning permit all over again regardless.
Yes, they would, right. I, I'm saying amendment, but I, I think what you're saying is.
The amendment is for the building permit because that one did include the exterior alteration or not?
Yes, they have a permit for the siding and the, the roof, yep.
Okay. And, but then, so that part is just an amendment to, to an existing permit, but the zoning piece.
There'll still be amendment, because you're changing, rather than assisted living and floor plans for that, the change of use and the floor plans have changed. So when we go back to zoning enforcement for their own permit, following our zoning permit.
It's a new permit from zoning.
It could be, it could be amended.
Okay. You, Patrick?
Yeah, it, it could be, it, it really depends on what the project scope is. I, I think it would be a change to the decision on the zoning permit as the, as it relates to the use going from X to Y.
What I'm getting at is only that this wasn't completely buttoned down in its first iteration. And for various reasons, it was not as we would have wanted to see it in that it had a change of use and we weren't seeing it, and it was only a building permit application. What I'm looking for, Ms. Siska, is that as it goes forward, it is very conscious that your client is very conscious of following town process and, and getting all the, and, and having the correct permitting, because that was, that was a disturbing thing, how this evolved. That, that somebody would just file building permits with that much of a change of work. Okay, Mr. Wells, finally I get to you. I'm so sorry.
No, that's quite all right. Yeah, I just wanted to probe a little bit, Ms. Siska, on your, on your energy strategy. It's a 64-year-old building, and you may not know this, but are you replacing the mechanicals? Are you generally going with the existing mechanicals? In there?
Thank you for the question. We actually have the architect Emmanuel Demore, who can speak to the energy plan with greater detail than I can, if he could.
Got him?
Sure.
See you, Mr. Demore. Alrighty, he is on the way in. And if you would unmute and go ahead, Mr. Demore. Hello.
Yeah, I could ask the questions and maybe you respond, so, just to save time.
No, I heard about it. Yes, no, totally. We have new mechanical systems.
Okay. Then I guess the question is, you know, it looks like you're doing traditional gas boiler. Any consideration for heat pumps?
It's all electric.
Say again?
Pardon?
The new system's all electric, he says.
Okay.
Heating and cooling.
All right.
Water, everything is electric.
That's wonderful. Thank you for that. Two final questions. Maybe I missed it. Are, are you including solar on that big flat roof of yours?
Well, no, unfortunately, we didn't include solar. There is, you know, concerns about penetrations and potential leakage into the structure. So no, solar wasn't contemplated originally. And despite the fact that, you know, the large surface of the roof, there are, you know, like vans and stuff, so that wasn't one of the original thoughts.
Okay, fin, final thought. No EV chargers? Was that a conscious decision or?
It was also, we, we didn't anticipate it under, you know, the, the previous application. But obviously, we realized that there's, you know, requirement under the change of use application. So we'll have to comply with whatever is required, obviously. Yeah.
Okay, not to argue against my own case, but, and Nick and Margarita can overrule me, but this looks to me like a renovation and not a new build. So I, I don't think our EV charging mandate covers this. So ideally, you would put EV chargers in there, but I mean, my interpretation is it would not be required.
It's a tricky thing because you're, you're switching, you're taking a vacant building that had mostly occupants who were not driving, except for staff, and you're converting it to an active building. So our regulation doesn't really cover that. But the decision you could make is really based up to the applicant, which is, is the demand going to be there from the tenants, from the occupants, from the new occupants, and some people will probably want it. So I, I think, I think it is a blank spot, and it's probably one, Patrick and Tracy, that we should consider in our regs, because we're looking at conversions of uses more. And how do we address conversions of existing buildings in our regs in general for things that are like that? Anything else, Arne?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
So a question for you, one more question. No comments from conservation? I, I'm missing them for some reason.
I think this goes back to, it was August of '24?
Well, no, because, well, Patrick.
They didn't comment on this application.
Yeah, my understanding.
It's an adaptive reuse.
Yeah.
That they were staying on the footprint that was already used.
Right.
And so the parking and the building.
So I probably missed this yesterday. I know. Did we have any comment on proposed landscaping and planting plans?
ARC looked at it.
Right.
When they looked at it for the conversion, there's not, been no change to that? That still stands?
Yeah, these are the same landscape plans that ARC looked at.
So, so shall we ask our own staff to take a final, should we consider that if we were to move this to approve it, that we ask our own staff to do a final sign-off on the planting and that it be consistent with the landscape regulations?
Well, I guess the question I'd have is, do you consider the ARC to be the decision on the landscaping, or are you inserting the current decision as being the operative language?
I would say that the ARC is more aesthetic at the moment, given the fact that they are down their main landscape architect. I don't know when they did this.
A while back.
Okay.
November 23.
So they do tend to be more aesthetic. I think asking that a member of our staff just review it and then agree to it, I just administratively just make sure that everything looks consistent. You would do that anyway, right?
We would, yes, we would, and we would generally rely on other agencies' decisions if they went to that to make sure that they're matching. Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Lo and then Madam Jenkins.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything you've just said. When reading this, it, it, it doesn't appear as if the landscape work is, is extensive by any means. They're, they're removing four holly trees, they're adding six new trees, they're, it, it looks like they're kind of doing a cosmetic upgrade in the style that they prefer, and I, you know, I, I'm sure that conservation will, will give them, I mean, I, I just, this isn't a, doesn't appear to be anything like a trouble spot.
Right. Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Jenkins.
Yes, the, the question I had is, and again, I assume the staff can do this if, if this moves forward. Health did have the instruction about modifications to the pump chamber with a safety device and certification. And I assume that comes in at some point between approval and building permit.
Yes. Health sign-up is required for CO as well as building permits.
Okay, great. The other one was widening the ADA spaces. That would also come in at some point post-approval.
Well, to building code.
Yeah.
And that would, that, that, we, we will do that.
Yeah. And again, previous use. You probably did have some, you, you probably were using the ADA spaces for certain things, but it's been a while, so the codes changed.
And cars have gotten wider.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not even, according to the site plan, they're not even wide enough at the moment, but.
Yeah, that's, that's.
There's a lot of latitude there, that space, that parking space area is a, an odd shape, so.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else on the commission? All right. Does anybody from the public wish to cop, if you comment on this application? This is a conversion of a nursing home to residential use, and it is at 1188 King Street, 1188 King Street, a conversion of a nursing home. I see no public comment. Again, please raise your virtual hand if you have any comment. Nope, I see none. All right. Does anybody have any objection to closing the application at this time? Hearing no objection, this application is hereby closed, and I would entertain a motion from Mr. Secretary.
1188 King Street Final Site Plan PLPZ 2025-196. Applicant is requesting summary review of final site plan to renovate and convert a vacant 75-bed nursing home to a, into a 17-unit multifamily residential development related site and septic work, stormwater management, landscaping pursuant to Section 82R of Connecticut General Statutes. Proposal is located in a 4.24 acre parcel in the RA4 Zone. Whereas per Section 82R of the Connecticut General Statutes, nursing home is freestanding structure. The home is not a non-conforming use. The conversion does not result in a substantial alteration of the structure's footprint. Conversion does not result in total demolition of the structure, and the owner has declared in writing to the municipality that the nursing home has been vacant for no fewer than 90 days immediately preceding the submission of the summary review application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission finds that conservation issue comments on 8/29/24 indicating recommendations to the, that's correct, incorrect.
I'm sorry, what?
Typeo, nothing. Zoning issue comments 5/29 indicating existing permits have been issued for the project. Health Department issued comments dated 5/28/25 indicating Connecticut, State of Connecticut approval of a 28-bedroom septic system with conditions. ARC reviewed the project at their 8/17/23 and 11/29/23 meetings indicating approval of minor changes to the building and landscape plan. DPW drainage, applicant submitted a drainage exemption dated 3/20/25. DPW traffic issue comments dated 5/29/25 indicating receipt of middle part of zoning permit. Beta issue comments 5/29/25 indicating recommendations of proposal. EMAC issued comments dated 6/22/25 indicating recommendations to the plan, and Wetlands issued a permit ease questionnaire dated 2/24/25 indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the application for final site plan noting the following. Planning and zoning staff will confirm that the final site, architectural and landscape. Planning and zoning staff will confirm that the final site, architectural and landscape plans are consistent with the A R C twenty twenty-three approvals. Per beta comments, uh, designated one of the handicapped spaces is inaccessible by signing it appropriately. Um, calculate the uh, available intersection site distances at the driveway and determining if improvements are necessary.
Perfect.
Uh, collecting twenty twenty and twenty-one uh, twenty twenty-one crashed out on King Street near the driveway before the site became vacant. And uh, evaluate the type of crashes and determine if mitigation is necessary to improve safety. Uh, clarify if appar- uh, fire apparatus access to the back of the building is provided, if not coordination with the, an approval of what the fire department is required. Providing bicycle storage or tie downs and electric vehicle charging stations as required by the town of Greenwich. Uh, and install a stop sign and stop line on the uh, site driveway to King Street, if not, if it doesn't already exist. Per the state of Connecticut septic approval, future increase in sewer design flows for the property is not prohibited. Secondary safety device must be installed within the septic pump chamber riser. The design engineer shall supervise the installation of the system. The design engineer shall uh, provide written certification that the system was installed in good formance with the roof plans. Water usage records shall be provided to the Greenwich Health Department. All wells on the property shall be properly abandoned, and the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or internal environmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. McCray, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Wells.
Hi.
Mr. Yaski.
Hi.
Mr. Low.
Hi.
Albin is also eyeing with that the motion passes five nothing. Uh, thank you very much to both of you. Um, Madam Siska, if you would just keep an eye on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could, um, so now, um, Mr. Basili, can I just make sure that I can hear you?
Oh, yeah.
Hello, okay. All right, tell us if you have any difficulty with any of the sound or any of the speed of or talking, or any mumbling, because the mumblers are coming tonight.
Oh, boy.
Okay, we therefore, we now open the public hearing. Uh, our first, oh, well, let's get the applicant in. Is it Ms. Suchins?
It is.
Okay, I just lost her. All right, got her. All right, anybody else? Well, let's 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 Miss Suchin start if she may have an army again. Anytime you're ready, ma'am. Um, our next app, our first application at public hearing is Greenwich Hospital for a final site plan and special permit to modify the existing non-conforming use to another non-conforming use for the uh, in the underlying zone and make site improvements for accessibility and traffic flow on a twenty-one thousand square foot parcel located at three Perry Ridge Road in the R six zone. Um, this is a must-close for us for tonight unless we get an extension from the applicant, so if you would all um, keep that in mind, seated on or the regular members. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Suchins.
Uh, thank you. Um, if we could also promote uh, Ally Harrison, Dave Ginter.
I knew that was coming.
Chris Granatini.
All right, she's not responding. Dave Ginter doesn't have his hand up. Is he in? Nope, there he is. Okay, good. Thanks for that, you guys. The hands up are always good. Rich Sears from Slam?
Yes.
All right. All right, we're and Blender something?
Bob Blenderman and Mark Kozak.
All right. So it is an army.
Hopefully only some of us are.
Uh, Mr. Sears has his hand up, but he's not accepting the promotion. Maybe he's walked away. There he goes. Okay, who'd I miss? I have David Ginter. What does that look like a complete cast to you? Uh, Lonnie Bo, Alany, Ginter, Granatini, Ginter.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, all right.
At least for the beginning.
Okay, you don't outnumber us this time, so that's a start.
Right, uh, so good evening or good afternoon.
All right.
Uh, Amy Suchins for the record here representing Greenwich Hospital. Um, we'll introduce the team as we go forward, but I just wanted to start with um, kind of a recap. We'll go through where we are. We heard a number of the questions on the briefing meeting yesterday, um, most of which we'll go through. And then we can talk about any um, outstanding issues like we did last time. I think it'll be easier if we walk through all of the um, issues. Most importantly, uh, Ally will walk you through the changes to the exterior as a result of the um, A R C comments and what you echoed from from them as well. And we'll also um, touch on a number of the sort of um, technical details that came up. Um.
Uh, Ms. Suchins, before you uh, move on, the of the of the three projects, uh, the s- the smaller Perry Ridge and the uh, thirty-eight Lake um, seem to be almost complete. Uh, if we can kind of dispense with those first before we get actually into the hospital, the the actual uh, Elzy Watson, that kind of thing, because that actually, that's where it gets complicated, but I think the others probably much less.
I'm not following what you want to do, Nick.
Uh, I think she was going to be going through, uh, we had actually kind of put them together as a
So do you want to, you want to do all the applications at the same time? Because I don't think we did that the last time, did we? Do you remember, Ms. Suchins?
I think if if I understand it correctly, we want to wrap up three Perry Ridge and thirty-eight Lake first and then move on to the five seventy-seven.
So that means we are going to add thirty-eight Lake to the present discussion and hear them together, or are we going to hear them separately?
I think we probably could dispense with uh, uh, three Perry and and thirty-eight Lake quickly before we get into the details of the hospital itself.
This is a legal question. Are we hearing the two applications separately? Or are we going to combine them and hear hear them together? Patrick, what did we do the last time? I don't remember.
We took them all in one contiguous presentation, but we obviously can do.
Let's do it all in one contiguous presentation and let's follow the sequence. So um, let me just do that for the record. We will now open the other two applications. We will now also be hearing the other two. Uh, number four is G H Realty Holding LLC for a final site plan and special permit at thirty-eight Lake Avenue, and that's again to modify an existing non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. Um, we will also open at this time uh, Greenwich Hospital for a final site plan and special permit to renovate the Watson and Cohen pavilions to accommodate their use as a Smilow Cancer Center. Uh, that is mostly an interior, an internal alteration at five Perry Ridge Road and seventy-seven Lafayette Place. So all these three applications will contain, will be contained in one public record. All right, with that, we will start over again and proceed. Hello, Madam Suchins.
Hello.
I see you don't outnumber us this time, though.
We do not.
All right, go ahead.
All right, um, so as I said, we're here um, and we'll go through a presentation. Um, Mr. McCray, if you want us to the issues on um, thirty-eight and three um, are sort of wrapped up in a single slide at the end. I'm happy to start with that portion if the commission would prefer to just sort of hear those and then get into the details of um, the longer discussion on five Perry Ridge and seventy-seven, or I can just go through. It's, we're happy to do whatever your preference would be.
Uh, yeah, well, let's start with that last slide. That'd be great, because I think we can cut, we get into the details of uh, the actual hospital building itself.
Sure, um, if I could share my screen?
Should be all set.
Now I am. Second. Uh, so as I said, the um, last couple of things on, were focused on thirty-eight and three, thirty-eight Lake and three Perry Ridge. Uh, number one, and this applies to all of the applications, the sewer flow information was submitted um, to uh, the department uh, as well as to the P and Z staff. It's been submitted, received, acknowledged. We did submit the letters acknowledging all of the comments. I think we're very comfortable about that. Um, the uh, our our R F Bs that were commented in um, Beta's comments, if the commission would like us to install them, we are certainly willing to do that. I think what we understood from the last meeting was that the commission didn't necessarily know if it preferred them, but if the commission preference is to install those, we are happy to do that.
Is interesting and is what you heard, Ms. Suchins, and I'm going to let Madam Jenkins go ahead and comment, is in the interim, we heard a different application in which we they, we learned about the impact that they have on vehicles seating seating the right-of-way to pedestrians. And I believe there was a lot of conviction that this would make sense. Um, this would be, make sense, so with from that, Mary, would you go ahead and comment? Because it was you that said it yesterday.
Yeah, I I think particularly that the the um, I know that Beta had suggest, has had recommended three. Obviously, uh, three is better than two, but at the very least, um, that is such a tight um, arrangement of crosswalks, especially the ones that go into the planted traffic circle. And you have traffic coming from four different directions, very limited site area. People are not good about yielding when they should yield, and it seems to me that um, uh, I I live in the neighborhood, so I I cross that frequently, and you really have to be particularly careful. And I think, given the fact that it would be easy enough to add some pedestrian safety mechanism like the R F Bs uh, to just, just make sure, again, people, drivers and pedestrians are very predictably um, preoccupied if they are involved in health, either as visitors or as patients. I just say nothing of wanting to protect your staff, obviously, from any sort of um, accident. Um, so I I strongly feel that the additional prophylactic protection of pedestrians in a hospital area um, and where there is a fair amount of traffic, particularly at certain times of day. I feel very strongly that it would be appropriate to do it.
Sure, and and as we said, I think what we were reacting to in response to the to the beta comments um, was the last meeting, and if there's been a a change in the the commission's position, we're happy to install them. Um, and if it's the two locations or the three, um, either, you know, either scenario is fine with us. We'll leave it to the commission's preference.
Thank you. And again, my preference would be three. Again, keep keep people, keep motorists and pedestrians aware in that particular area. It's very tight, and there's a fair amount of traffic and and pedestrian and vehicle traffic through there.
Understood.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, and then also on thirty-eight Lake and three Perry Ridge, there were the departments that we received, uh, excuse me, the comments we've received from the Department of Public Works at the end of last week, noting that um, so there are uh, some encroachments in uh, the town right-of-way, in particular on three Perry Ridge, there's that low um, stone wall and then portions of the sidewalk. Um, we are happy to enter into uh, whatever easement agreement is necessary. I think we all want to keep those in place, maintain the look and feel um, of the area um, in both locations. I think there's a portion of the sidewalk, so I just wanted to note for the record um, that we are willing to do that prior to the issuance of zoning permit. Um, and then there was a question yesterday about the um, rear gate at three Perry Ridge. Um, this is the photo we had put into the last presentation. This is the one at the the existing gate at the corner um, of Lake and Lafayette. Uh, it will be the same thing, that the the rear gate at um, three will just have an automatic arm, so when somebody um, approaches the gate, it will go up automatically. As a reminder, the front gate is the one where um, it will require either um, uh, somebody to be buzzed in or for the employees on the the bottom floor. Um, those in the doctor's office, they would have um, some sort of key card type access. So that is um, the two things on on that front. Um, I think with respect to everything else on thirty-eight Lake and three Perry Ridge, um, I don't think there were any other outstanding comments. I'm happy to discuss any of the other um, issues you might have. Otherwise, we can just go back to the um, uh, sort of main presentation for for five.
Anybody else?
I'm good to go here.
All right, let's move on then.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, so just to remind everybody, um, sort of where we where we stand. Um, reminder, just orientation and keeping the building straight. Uh, five Perry Ridge is the main hospital campus, and in in particular, uh, we're talking about the Watson uh, Pavilion. Uh, across the traffic circle is seventy-seven Lafayette, which is the Cohen Pavilion, Benheim Cancer Center. And then obviously, uh, one three Perry Ridge, thirty-eight Lake on either side of the the hospital uh, main campus at at five Perry Ridge. Um, and what I wanted to highlight, there was some question um, yesterday and in the supplemental materials about our relocations. The thing that I wanted to highlight in what we submitted last week, um, we obviously had the prior relocations uh, that took place from two thousand nineteen through October of twenty twenty-four. And then there are still some ongoing um, moves that are underway. Frankly, once things um, are approved and we can um, start work, uh, pulmonary medicine, outpatient surgical clinic, and I wanted to note on that one specifically that um, we had prev- previously noted that that would be moving to forty-nine Lake. The hospital is actually in the process of negotiating a lease for a new location outside the sort of immediate vicinity of five Perry Ridge. Um, that is approximately twenty-two hundred patient visits. Um, so those will move outside the neighborhood, um, if pending those lease negotiations. Obviously, we don't want to, while we're in negotiations, I don't want to mention the location, but it is outside the immediate neighborhood. And then the other one, as a result of that move, is that occupational health, which was supposed to be going to fifty-six Lafayette, um, is going to go to forty-eight Lake instead. So that brings us with the future relocations. Um, here, uh, eighty-seven fifty was the total number. Um, what we're in fact doing is moving, um, it will be a total of sixty thousand um, spaces, excuse me, patient visits, a hundred staff members. And I did want to note here, it is including the sixty thousand number. We had obviously already included twenty-two fifty. But I just did want to note that um, probably shouldn't say additional, but that twenty-two fifty of those visits will also be now outside the immediate area. And then just laying out.
Uh, Ms. Suchins, hold on just a second. Yes, Nick has his hand up.
Uh, Ms. Suchins, can you go back to the the previous slide?
Yeah.
A quick question. Uh, sixty thousand five hundred fifty-one being relocated?
Yes.
Off the top of your head, do you know what the total patient visits for the whole facility is now?
Um.
That that critical issue, I just wanted to know if you knew it.
Total in including inpatient?
Yeah, yeah, any anything that's there.
I.
So I know that sixty sixty's going someplace else, but how many are, if I was, if I was there, say, last November? But not a critical information. Now, the other.
I I'm I'm not sure, because we had looked at it, as you'll see later, we had looked at it from the perspective of outpatient, so I think apples to apples. Um, but there are others from the hospital listening in, so if if somebody knows the number, we can, we can look for that for you.
Okay, and it's my understanding, I guess from the supplemental that you had given us on five twenty-nine, a lot of this is actually going to five hundred West Putt and Holly Hill?
Yes, and and some of those were um, what we had had previously, the um, there were visits, excuse me, uh, departments that were previously located that had gone to five hundred West Putnam and then to Holly Hill. Um, and then pulmonary was, I believe, the one that was going to five hundred West Putnam.
Okay.
And behavioral health has gone to uh, West Main Street, Stanford, just so you're aware.
Right, that's about ten thousand patients. Okay, that's that's a good hunk of that number. Okay. Uh, obviously, I probably can understand my concern is that I've I've got main hospital campus, and now I seem to have five hundred West Putnam as a, you know, Greenwich Hospital West kind of thing.
Right.
Then I'm concerned about overloading that in that part of town with the relocations. It's great, things are in Stanford, Holly Hill, spreading it around a little bit. But um, my concern is somewhere along the line is five hundred West Putnam going to be inundated with patients, and can that facility uh, support what's happening, you know, and what will be happening over the summer? So thank you, Ms. Suchins.
Apparently. Um, and then just. Um, and then just to put again, the visual that we had put together with those relocations, this was um, nothing changed on this uh, layout. The surgical suite that was here previously identified as going to Forty Nine Lake is the one that's going to the new location. And then on same thing here, occupational health um, had been previously identified as Fifty Six Lafayette, and that's going to um, Forty Nine Lake. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to uh, Ally Harrison, who can walk you through um, the exterior modifications uh, that are happening to the.
Before you go to that, does anybody have any questions or comments on this part of what Ms. Sutens has presented? No, okay, let's hear about the exterior then.
Hello, everyone. Um, Ally Harrison, landscape architect with the SLAM Collaborative for the record. Go to the next slide, please. Um, so as Amy noted, following ARC approval, returning to P and Z with a revised garden approach, um, that will save two trees that have been reviewed and discussed, uh, both ARC and P and Z. Um, so this design reduces the size of the garden space at the corner of the building, providing only a raised planter bed, as you can see with the blue uh, dash line at our limits. Uh, the space will be no longer an accessible garden space at that corner. The previously proposed door locations um, at the eastern facade of the building will be removed. Uh, but the healing garden treatment area at the existing patio space is to remain as previously provided, um, a garden area with with access from the southern facade. Next slide, please. Um, it shows our, at our last meeting, um, a revised iteration of this graphic to show the existing versus the proposed um, garden limits, CNC limited impact to the um, southeast corner of the building. I'm really emphasizing all that's to remain and um, where the proposed garden will go with the reduction of the space. Next slide. Uh, as noted, the two trees in question um, are to remain. Only the existing maple that is growing against the building will be removed. Um, and then additional proposed tree and garden plantings in the new planting area. And all other existing canopy to remain in place. Next slide. Um, updated section elevation, so uh, shown in this section, the reduced extension of the proposed garden wall from the proposed planting areas. You can see that that is shortened up on um, the right side of the section here. Next slide. Um, this is an unchanged cross section of the healing garden, uh, but it captures the relationship between the interior of the building treatment area and the outside treatment garden in addition to um, showing the existing patio wall that will remain. Next slide. And this revised section is facing the eastern facade of the building, so showing the full extent um, of the height of the hospital against these proposed garden walls that loop around the corner. Next slide. Um, and then providing overall views of the revised garden, so the focus on that revised raised garden that wraps around the corners, um, you can see the other location for the the treatment space has remained unchanged. Um, and so it's been been reduced in scale. Next slide. And then finally, the plant palette, slightly simplified um, from what we previously proposed. So smaller garden trees um, have been removed. Uh, the overall intent uh, as previously noted, is to include a mix of uh, colors, heights and textures and evergreen materials provide um, seasonal interest for passersby's and and those enjoying the landscape from inside the building uh, treatment areas as well. Thank you.
Uh, next, we're going to turn it over to.
Any questions on that part?
Just that uh, ARC is okay. They saw this plan, correct? This revised plan with the planting bed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just confirm, I believe you said that originally you were going to remove three existing trees and now you're only removing one?
Correct.
Thank you.
Right, it's right here on the plan, where the X is.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Dave Ginter. Um, we heard the question yesterday about um, whether we could evaluate uh, another crosswalk. Um, ultimately, what you'll hear from Dave, um, and he'll walk you through it, is that um, number one, we don't think there's a need for it, but more importantly, um, it presents some technical issues and he'll uh, explain to you um, some of the challenges associated with that.
Good evening, Dave Ginter from Redness Amade. Um, Pat, am I able to get screen sharing ability?
Just have to ask nicely.
Please. Thank you.
He should be all set.
Yep, thanks. Uh, right, so it should be up there. Um, so uh, I did hear about the comment uh, yesterday, I think that was raised by Mr. McRey about uh, putting in uh, an additional mid-block um, crosswalk here. Uh, for uh, reference purposes, I do have a zoomed out uh, aerial photo showing uh, the garden scape uh, in front of uh, where the healing garden is proposed right in this location here. You can see the Bendine uh, building proposed that they're existing at seventy seven Lafayette on the right-hand side. Uh, there are obviously multiple uh, crosswalks, as was discussed earlier. There's multiple crosswalks uh, through the traffic circle area uh, at Lake uh, Lafayette, William Perry Ridge intersection. There's also an additional mid-block, I'll call it, uh, crosswalk uh, near and just west of the entrance to the existing staff garage. Uh, the crosswalk that I believe Mr. McRey raised in its location here uh, that he recalls from prior applications uh, presented uh, for development across the street at Lake Avenue. Uh, this crosswalk was was done to work with the proposed development at the time and to serve that facility, so doctors, patients, other staff members, et cetera, would be able to exit uh, the doors uh, located uh, just to the west of our healing garden, uh, come down through the lower garden area, I'll call it, down the set of stairs to Lake Ave, uh, and then come across and enter the new facility that was proposed at the time uh, across the street there. With that facility no longer proposed, uh, putting a crosswalk in, we are questioning, you know, who is that that crosswalk going to serve, especially if there is already one to the west? And the uh, uh, multiple crosswalks to the east. Additionally, and I apologize that the aerial image here is a little difficult to see, but there is a large curb cut serving uh, the front of this uh, building uh, at Twenty Eight Lake. Uh, the crosswalk in the location that we proposed would not be able to go there. There's also some uh, grading concerns. Once you come down the set of stairs, we would not be able to have the crosswalk in line with that set of stairs. So we would have to move it east or west to avoid uh, the existing curb cut here and the existing curb cut at thirty. Uh, but again, with multiple crosswalks in the area, uh, with buildings that do not see the population uh, that would need to be walking back and forth to serve the hospital. Um, excuse me, we do not see the need uh, for this. Uh, with any cross uh, walks between or with any usage between uh, the two buildings, it would be between Five Perry Ridge and Seventy Seven Lafayette, uh, where any uh, staff, faculty, visitors, et cetera, would either be exiting, which I believe will be converted into a staff-only door uh, to the west of our healing garden, uh, or coming down the sidewalks from the main entrance. Uh, primarily, everybody would be coming to the uh, traffic circle and then crossing Perry Ridge, crossing Lafayette and entering into uh, Ben Time uh, through this interchange here. Uh, we don't anticipate that crossing uh, in the mid-block here to be uh, used.
Any questions? I can't.
So, Mr. Ginter, actually, Ms. Sutens, I just, so I want to make sure I understood this because the reason why I was uh, questioning having a crosswalk there is that you have a new uh, uh, off, off-campus, if you would, or periphery in the campus uh, uh, HR building. How much interaction between Thirty Eight Lake um, and the actual hospital building is there? My concern was, we had talked about a lot of pedestrian safety in and around basically what is a campus. Uh, yes, there's one down the street, there's a crosswalk, all the crosswalks up there, but it would seem to me if I was in the HR building and needed to run across the street, I'd be running across the street to that stair, right up through the garden to whatever door is open. If that's not the case, and HR stays in and stays put all day long, I can understand the need for the, not, no need for the crosswalk. It, can we explain a little bit, will they be kind of staying put all day?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the expectation that the entire department is moving over there. Um, it is, and happy to bring the plans back up, but mostly self-contained. There's a, there's a conference room, there's a small um, you know, like kitchenette type thing. Um, so the expectation is that that will be primarily self-contained. Not to say that somebody might need to come over to the, to the main hospital for a meeting or something like that, but I think predominantly it would be self-contained.
But much of the interaction between staff and HR these days is via Zoom or Teams. It's it's mostly done virtual, there's not a lot of of back and forth um, between HR in person and the staff that exists in the hospital.
Got it, very good. Thank you very much for that clarification. So COVID strikes again. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ginter.
Yeah, one more thing, just to clarify, Mr. McRey, uh, if we were to put this in also, it would result in at least one uh, street parking space to be removed to accommodate that, and I know parking is.
Well, I, the design and location, that's up to you, you're the engineer, but uh, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right.
And so we'll go back to the.
Um.
Yep.
Patient geography. Oh, great. Okay, where's, where's Mr. Yesky?
Here.
Okay, here you go.
Right, so um, just wanted to walk you through the information that we had submitted in kind of the supplemental narrative um, about geography data. Um, I know there were some questions last time and some questions uh, yesterday about this. Um, but as we um, noted in the materials, um, what we looked at, and again, kind of to the, to the question, um, we looked at outpatient locations in Greenwich, so we were looking at, you know, where Greenwich residents are coming in Greenwich, because I think that was your concern. Obviously, inpatient um, information is a little bit different. If somebody um, is coming for uh, whether it's maternity care or somebody is in a car accident on ninety five and maybe is from out of town, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, um, particularly given that the services we're talking about at Ben Time are also outpatient. So we looked at um, the, you know, outpatient to outpatient. And as we noted in the um, chart, when you look at all of the outpatient locations in Greenwich, so whether it's five hundred West Putnam or five fifty five Holly Hill, um, of that service, the town of Greenwich, including all of the zip codes in Greenwich, we'll get into that in a second. Um, we showed you that map, um, but that includes anybody, if it's a Cause Cobb zip code, if it's a Riverside, whatever. Um, all of it is is included in this thirty two, thirty two point six percent um, total. Uh, you'll see, as we noted in the memo, it's a significant drop-off. Stanford is the next um, most predominant town, and that's all the way down at uh, just, just under thirteen percent. Um, when we look at it specific to the patients um, who are using the services offered at the existing Ben Time facility, um, it's thirty nine point eight percent. Again, that includes all of the zip codes in the town of Greenwich. Um, and consistent, again, Stanford's about twelve and a half percent. Um, Rye and Norwalk flip-flop um, as compared to the total outpatient. Um, but as we also explained, the thirty nine point eight percent represents about seventy hundred different Greenwich residents that are coming to Ben Time for some type of service over the course um, of the fiscal year. Um, and then, knowing that that's a, you know.
I'm sorry, I'm just struggling here. So, this doesn't add up, this only adds up to forty.
About sixty five percent.
Okay.
So that's the next slide.
Okay.
Um, so then this was the other um, information that we had. Um, because obviously each patient has a zip code and an address that they put on um, their information. Um, what we did on the, on the previous slide was to identify what the top five towns were coming to use these services. Um, this map looks at basically where everyone is coming from by zip code. And so what you'll see here is that zip codes obviously don't always match the municipal boundaries because locations have multiple zip codes. Um, so what you see, um, here's the, the heart in the middle is where Greenwich Hospital is. And then there are various uh, distances as to where everybody's coming from. Um, so as I pointed out on the last uh, slide, you see that the predominant, you know, five point seven seven percent to fifteen percent are coming from the darker green. And then we still have a three to five percent um, of patients coming from the lighter green. Not surprising and sort of consistent with what we have explained, that people tend to look for care close to home. Um, as you move further away, um, you know, particularly into this ten-mile buffer, um, we start, we have a significant drop-off. There may still be um, some residents or some patients who are choosing to come to um, Ben Time for a service. Um, again, we've, we've talked about the fact that um, you know, the, the patient might be coming from somewhere else, but perhaps a caregiver is located in Greenwich or somebody's coming to the facility because it's proximate to work. Um, or they just come, they come for consultation and like we've explained, maybe try to choose to get care um, elsewhere after um, exploring their options at Ben Time. Um, so this really, what this map was intended to do was identify sort of where the overall total. So when you look at the chart that we had had on the last slide, um, adding up to, you know, just about uh, sixty five percent, the remaining thirty five percent is what you see in basically in the oranges and the reds in the surrounding area where people might be coming. Frankly, very few people, but there are people who um, individually comprise that thirty five percent coming from the surrounding um, region. And then there was also the question, oh, Mr. Yesky.
Yes, just to put it in perspective, how many beds are in Ben, Benheim right now? How many patients uh, total beds, it can be part of the cancer clinic in there at any one time?
There are no beds, so no one's staying overnight.
I meant, yeah.
And the, and the, and um, it used to be the third floor. What, what, what's your total cancer patient overnight usage in, at the hospital, I think is what he's asking.
Not, not overnight. Um, th- these patients come and go, right? It's a day service, right? Right, how many patients do you, can you service existing in Benheim?
Sure, let me go to the next slide because that's exactly what we were going to talk about. Um, so what we had shown and the methodology for the traffic study and the parking analysis was the projections for what the capacity of the new facilities would be, the combination of Ben Time and what is moving into Watson. So if you look at, and this is, this is the appendix F from the traffic. This has been in your submission since day one, so this is not um, any kind of new information. It's part of what um, Beta and DPW looked at in evaluating traffic impacts, parking capacity, everything else. Um, this bottom portion with the Cohen Pavilion existing operation is in fact what our current absolute maximum capacity of the facility is. So every room occupied at every moment by every available doctor. Obviously, the facility doesn't usually function like that, nor would the expectation be that a future facility would operate at max capacity every moment of the day. Um, but this, this data is what the existing facility is. So three exam rooms, four mammography areas, four ultrasounds, two linear accelerators, two exam rooms, one CT simulator, six exam, two private infusion, three, thirteen infusion. This is, this is the existing operation. And then what we did um, for, for the purposes of being incredibly conservative and making sure that there were no parking issues, no traffic considerations, the proposed operation reflects, again, absolute maximum capacity of both Watson and Cohen at full buildout. So not fifty percent, once things start to operate. But if we had a complete facility with every room, every machine, every physician available, that again, reflects. that again reflects, is reflected in this chart as far as how many doctors, nurses, um, rotating specialists. There's a support group, as you see. We took all of that into account. So I think, you know, to the extent that you're asking about what our projections are, what we're thinking about is what is the maximum, absolute maximum capacity at which this facility could operate? And it is all reflected here in the chart with, um, that was the basis of the pa- parking and traffic analysis. And then to the, sort of draw that out to make the connection to Greenwich, um, as I noted in the memo about the patient geography, we expect that at minimum, we will probably continue to serve the same number of patients. So just shy of forty percent of the existing Ben Time users are from Greenwich. We think that will continue to be the case. And ideally, we, people are going to choose to stay, um, and receive their care locally once we have the capacity to accommodate, um, you know, more patients over the, over the term. But, but basically, this is the, the most detail we can give as far as what we project the, um, services or, or need to be.
Yeah, it's interesting. Way back when, um, that was the split that we were given way back when. Forty percent from Greenwich, sixty percent outside of Greenwich. So, uh, just interesting. So you're coming back to the same. Uh, I was concerned about the flow of new people to the new cancer center and whether that's going to create a lot of excess traffic on certain roads in town. Let me ask you a related question. I see this. I also ask about, uh, the parking directly below the Watson Pavilion that is now the cancer center.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, been in it quite a bit. There are doctors down there. I said, I thought I saw this somewhere. Can't find it. Um, do you anticipate that the majority of the cancer patients can park in that area directly below Watson? I know I was told that you have enough parking in the hole, but the other side of that, the other pavilion, is quite a distance. Uh, and it's connected, I understand that. But did anybody ever do an analysis that we basically think operationally? That if you're coming to the cancer center, it, it's likely that we have enough parking right below the Watson, if you know what I mean? I know there's a lot of doctors parked there. I don't know whether you have done an analysis of how many doctors park there and are we moving them out? You know, where are they going? That kind of thing. But they're, are you going to free up that entire parking below Watson to serve only patients and reserve it that way? And is it enough room, assuming you're going to operate at a certain capacity on any one particular day? I don't know. Am I making myself clear?
Yeah, no. And I think, um, Chris, if Chris Granatini's on the call, he can talk about what we looked at as far as the sort of parking analysis and the, and the capacity. So, um, let me stop and Chris can weigh in.
Hi, Chris Granatini, professional engineer with Ty &amp; Bond, located at 213 Court Street in Middletown, Connecticut. Um, so in section six of our traffic and parking study, um, we talked about existing parking demand and we provided a table, six point two point one, where we went out and conducted two parking surveys of the Watson, Helmsley staff and Ben Time garages. Um, one was conducted on November fifth and one was conducted on January.
Just the staff? I, I didn't think it was just for the staff.
No, it was Watson, Helmsley, Cohen, staff garage, lot D. So we looked at all the parking facilities across the entire.
And I'm sorry, again, so you keep saying staff garage. You mean all, all the garages?
Yeah, we looked at all of the parking facilities across the entire system.
Okay, great.
To just look at capacity. So this is the table that we provided. Uh, what the table shows is that, you know, each of the two garages that we're talking about in question, Watson and Helmsley. So Watson has a hundred and four spaces, Helmsley has a hundred and forty-one spaces. You know, we measured the peak demand, um, and as part of our parking analysis, what Andy talked about earlier and the conservative analysis we did, we were forecasting that under kind of full operation of the Smilo underneath, you know, in the Greenwich Hospital, Five Perry Ridge, that our peak parking demand is about thirty-six parked cars. And so with, you know, if we assume that the eighty-four was the peak demand when we measured it, um, what we've noted is that we do need to re-implement the, um, the valet operation. So, you know, if there was some opportunity to unload some of the doctor parking in Watson, like we didn't look at it at that granular a level, uh, because through our analysis, we were able to determine that the combination of the two garages would be able to absorb the thirty-six car parking demand, peak demand of the Smilo with the valet, uh, reinstated.
And if I can just jump in, it's Bob. Um, you know, Dennis, just to kind of directly answer the question, you know, as we move, um, the Watson, um, for the Smilo Cancer Center, that operational decision to move physicians away to make room for the patients will absolutely be made. And that's something that operationally will make. I think right now the space is not used as a Smilo Cancer Center, um, and that's why it's not used that way today, uh, but it will in the future.
Got it. Uh, some of the numbers you were saying, I don't know, I'm looking at this, blowing it up. Uh, there's, so there's a hundred and four stripe spaces underneath Watson, right?
Correct.
Now, this peak demand is not what you just mentioned. The peak demand is sixty-seven, and you measured two different days. I get it. Um, that's, when you say peak demand, are you including doctors or just patients there?
So we went and counted all the cars that were parked in those two garages, uh, over the course of multiple, um, periods throughout that day. So we were there first thing in the morning and we stayed past five o'clock at night and we surveyed the garages about seven times throughout the day. And so the peak demand was the total of cars, the highest total number of cars that we observed to be parked.
So the thirty-six are patients' demand?
So the thirty-six is the pa- the future patient demand of Smilo. The sixty-seven and the eighty-four were the existing.
Are you going to reserve that space? It sounds like you have a lot of room if you reserve it for patients, that they can all park in the space below Watson. And it, it sounds like a slam dunk, right? And you'll still have excess space for doctors and staff.
Correct. That's, that's all part of the kind of institution of the valet for patient convenience and patient, you know, care to come in the front door if they choose to or to go down into Watson and valet their car, um, you know, adjacent to the elevator bays to get up into, into the Watson Pavilion. So all of that is, was part of the kind of parking management plan that would be implemented as part of the project.
Remind me, um, we went through this on the original application. What's the average stay of a patient? Uh, I don't know whether it's different in the future than it was in the past, but what's the average stay now? How long do they have to be there for typically?
Apply different metrics to different, um, operations. And so like an infusion had a longer stay than a doctor's visit. And so, um, there's another, there's another table in our parking study.
Dennis, it varies. It varies based on the infusion. Um, and I think, you know, it's anywhere from one to two hours, three to four hours. It, it varies based on the patient.
Yeah, appendix, appendix F presents kind of how we, how we provided that latent patient demand within the garages.
All right. And when you did that analysis, you came down to, that, you know, you're operating on the notion that you're going to have, um, thirty-six spaces, spaces for patients underneath Watson, which looks like it's plenty of room if you control the staff and the doctors. And some of them are moving out, uh, and you can control that operationally. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And the thirty-six was the peak, so that wasn't all day thirty-six. That was the one, there was one hour when we had thirty-six. The rest of the day was less than thirty.
No, I, you know, my, my, my concern, I think the patient come first.
Yes.
The cancer center is conveniently located on that end of the hospital, the Watson. The elevator bank is right there, um, and, uh, it, it sounds like, based on the numbers you're showing, that there should be plenty of room for every patient.
Correct.
And that side doesn't have to walk a hundred yards from the Helmsley side of it.
Correct.
You control the staff and the doctors, which you can control.
That's correct, Dennis.
Okay. Got it.
Any other comments, Dennis?
Um, just a concern that, um, that there, there's, um, a lot of, other facilities are being built and, um, you might have to reach out to a greater market area. This is very similar to what we saw way back when in terms of forty percent, and those are the same people coming from Greenwich. Anyhow, the sixty percent might have to reach out. There's other cancer centers that are being developed and, uh, that might require a larger market area to attract the, the people that you're hoping to attract. I'm not sure how you quantify that, though, honestly. Um, and the only way you could do it is change the times of operation, which I think is a too forward question to figure that out at this point in time. So no. I got it.
Okay. Um, Mr. McRae and then, and Noel.
Um, Mr. Granatini, quick question. The parking survey data, you took some on, uh, November fifth of twenty-four, then again, January twenty-ninth to twenty-five. Uh, actually, maybe any one of the staff could maybe answer this. How much of, um, the facility was, uh, moved off-site for the second count in January? Or was any of it moved off-site yet?
Are you talking about like relocating some of the in-hospital operations?
Yeah, to the other, other, other sites.
I don't believe that anything took place in between those two. So the.
No, no, the real question is, is have you done these during the valley in your demand? You've already relocated fifty-one thousand people or whatever, and you do the traffic, the parking analysis, but a lot of those people are going to come back then? And is that during a valley? That's what you were asking, right?
I think it's, it's more of actually, so we're going to get to a different base number once, uh, staff and users are moved off-site. Uh, I would be wondering is, you know, if we got to back to that zero number before, uh, the treatment center started to open, uh, with an increased numbers of patients, staff coming to the treatment center, uh, come back to these same numbers. Um, I, that's the kind of thing I'm looking for, because it would seem to me if you're, you're putting other uses off-site now, this parking demand is going to go down to, you know, to a lot less than what's being represented. But it may come back, but I don't think it may come back as strong because you're, it's, it's a different type of use. I think that's what I'm really trying to get to. Is it really going to come back to these peak numbers again?
I'll try to unpack that. I'm not sure I totally understood the question, but I think.
But Nick, I mean, to your point, I think the more, everything that we're doing is trying to move things out to the ambulatory space when we can. So I think that.
Right.
It's only going to increase with time. Um, you know, the ambulatory space that we have, we're maximizing and growing. So that's going to move out more and more as time goes on. Your point.
Right. So it's going to be, your, your parking demand actually may fluctuate after the relocation of these services to other sites. Um, and you may not need as much parking as being represented because actually a lot of it's been off-sided.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Great. Thank you.
And Noel.
I, I just have sort of a simple question. You do have a sign outside the, um, the, the main hospital building that indicates the number of available parking spaces in that lot? And my question is, does that sign indicate? Because for years, my perception was that the doctors were parking under Watson and the patients and visitors go under Helmsley. Does that sign for both of those parking lots include the empty spaces for both of those parking lots? Or is it just for the one, the Helmsley building?
The, the sign counter just indicates parking spots that are available underneath the hospital. There's a separate garage around on Lake Avenue that does not have a counter. So those counts that you see do not.
Right. But the Watson, both Helmsley and Watson have parking underneath. So that sign does both of them, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So the, so the obvious question is, will you modify that sign just for patients to show them Watson somehow? But that, that was part of my question.
It did. When you get, when you actually get into the garage and you come to the split, it tells you how many are available on each side so that you know which way to go to find available spots.
I don't even pay attention to that. I just turn.
So the other, at one point.
Go ahead, Enno.
You had, you had somebody in that little booth when you get down to where that split occurs. And you, it was clearly blocked off if you tried to go to Watson and you were a patient or visitor. Um, are you considering with, I guess, the valet of having somebody back in that position? That's one part of my question. The other is, can you give, I mean, there are a number of places where there are hospitals and they serve a number of multipurposes, but they give cancer patients a pass or something that allows them to go to the side that is, allows them to most easily access. They give them the option of either using the valet for free or using a parking lot or parking space that is most easily, um, accessible for the, for where they need to go for their treatment. Um, and I.
I'm sorry. I think, I think operationally, that's certainly something we can look at. In the past, when physical therapy, for instance, was within the hospital, we had a series of spots that were close to the elevator that were reserved for physical therapy patients. Um, so that's certainly a system that we could look at operationally.
So obviously, in the follow-up, are you going to put a sign down there showing, turn left if you're a patient, that kind of thing?
So.
Both, both sides of the garage are designed to accommodate patients depending on where they're going in the building. Um, the, the sign that exists down there will direct them to where there are available spots. I think operationally, the question that's being asked is how will we direct the cancer patients to the left-hand side?
Yeah, there's, there's another question too. And Noel, could you talk a little bit? I think you mentioned it at a briefing, your anecdotal experience parking recently at the hospital.
Right. So it was actually, yeah, it was the morning after our last, um, the, um. So the reason I asked that question is that I noticed when we went in, there were eighty-seven in the morning or whatever it was, there were eighty-four spaces available. We went traditionally as we go over to the Helmsley, the parking that's under the Helmsley Pavilion. And there were clearly not eighty-four spaces. When we left, there were only five spaces left on that side. And it said, I think it was either thirty-six or forty-something that were left when we left about eight-thirty, um, from there. So I, that was why I asked that question about what does that sign actually sort of indicate, um, with regard, because it was a little bit, um, you know, confusing when I, you're, we're still working with that perception that only one side is really for patients. And I do have another question which has, are cancer surgeries happening in the Watson Pavilion? Or would they go over to where you currently have cer- the surgery, the surgeries now?
So surgeries happen within the hospital proper here.
So even, so if somebody is, you know, they have colon cancer and they have to get the surgery, they go over to the surgical. So that would be where they would probably want to be parking in a separate place if they're going in for that versus in.
Correct. Our, our operating rooms are either at Five Perry Ridge Road or over at Fifty-Five Holly Hill, depending on the type of surgery, inpatient or outpatient surgery, uh, that's where they take place.
Okay.
Mr. Lo. Unless you weren't done, um, and Noel, were you done, Madam Jones?
I'm done unless you have sort of, I guess, any other sort of questions. It's just trying to clarify what those numbers indicated with regard to the parking that's available under the hospital.
Okay. Uh, Mr., Mr. Lo.
Yeah. So, um, if your cancer programs are successful and you are able to capture some of the current, uh, some portion of the current patient base that is currently going elsewhere for care, do you anticipate the current forty percent Greenwich patient base, uh, to increase? Or are you assuming some sort of lockstep proportional increase in both Greenwich and non-Grenwich patient bases?
Mark, I can, I can start to answer that is, I think it's a great question. If we look at the growth in the Greenwich market, is that we are looking to grow more of the Greenwich market to come to Greenwich Hospital? To, to answer your question, I think the other thing is, you know, the success of the program, you know, we have a successful program now. It's really, like we said earlier in prior meetings, was one to. one, to increase the facilities, uh, capabilities for today's technology and how it's changed in the past. So that, that's been a lot of the, the focus of this. But of course, getting the increased market of Greenwich residents, um, that go elsewhere is the goal.
Right, presumably, yeah, I mean, from the, the get-go, you identified uh, uh, demand, which is what is occasioning um, uh, this, this increase in level of service. But, uh, the potential downside, maybe not downside, but the, the potential effect may also be that you become more, as you become more successful, you may end up attracting more people from outside of Greenwich. If your services and expertise uh become uh better known and uh, and, and more well-renowned, uh, suddenly, you, you may. I just didn't, I, I was curious about the, how you went about evaluating um, the expected growth and demand.
Yeah, the expected
For both, for both in-town residents and those uh elsewhere.
Yeah, the expected growth was based on our current um, service area. So the current service area is what we had showed in the heat map earlier, which was a public health understanding of what were the rates of increase in cancer, all types of cancer in those areas. So, you know, that was what we built the, the projection on, was that, that baseline service area uh, and the increase of cancer in those, in those populations. From a public health perspective.
So the growth should occur proportionate to the percentages you see today. It'll, it'll just be different numbers in, as a whole. If that answers your question, Mr. Lo.
Uh, ye- yes, it does. I'm, I'm just trying to get down, it, uh, sort of identify, um some of the analytical work that you obviously is behind um, your anticipated demand and, and your level of service that you, the increase in uh, cancer services that you're providing. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Laurel.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Yesky, I think Mr. Kozak was answering your question about parking assignments or whatever, is, did we, do we get to the end of that question or answer?
I don't know, I, I, my impression is that they're going to reserve space below Watson just for these cancer patients. And it sounded like they would have the room to have other staff members um um, also parked there as they are now. I mean, that's, that, that's what I heard.
But, yeah, that, we, we will reserve spots and prioritize cancer patients under the Watson Pavilion. The staff themselves will park in the staff garage, not in the patient garage. The, the physicians that you see parking in, in the garage, we do have some short-term physician parking reserved for docs that need to run in for an emergency, uh, and they parked right at, at the, the entrance point over there.
Yeah, right on the left as you drive in, down the ramp, I see him right there.
Correct, yep.
So, Patrick, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I, I feel like Mr. Kozak was going to tee up and answer, and I, we, we got off it before I got to hear it. So I wanted to just give the opportunity, so.
Um, and Noel.
Yeah, so another question that comes to mind is, with all of this, or is there, are you looking to hire more doctors, more staff to deal with um, in this? Or are you just kind of planning to work with what you have and you're just simply changing the equipment? The flow, the pattern, the flow within the, the building, um.
The answer is yes, I'm sorry.
Relatively small number, numbers. And in terms of number of staff that would be incremental, subspecialists, we're not talking about a, a large number of staff. If, if the question is, is that going to add to the volume or demand of spaces? Is that what you're asking?
Not really. This is actually less to do about the parking and more to do about is if, if this program, if you're talking that this program is going to grow along the sort of percentage lines that you have shown us in these um pie charts. Um, then I'm assuming that with that demand, people are going to want, I mean, and you're looking primarily here at cancer patients who have a lot of questions and are going through a lot of emotional stuff, so that they would want, I mean, obviously, to not to have enough time with whoever their, their physician is, their surgeon is, their oncology, whatever, all of those sort of various specialties or either, you know, the nurses that deal with this as well. Um, are you primarily, I guess, are you looking to hire specifically patient, I mean, I'm sorry, physicians or staff that would be dedicated to Greenwich Hospital, or are you sharing them with other parts of the Yale New Haven system? Um, meaning kind of what is the plan with regard to that? It's less about parking and traffic.
Yeah, Noel, it's a great question. It's a great question. It, it's a mixture of both. I think, you know, some specialists, uh, subspecialists uh, within the Yale New Haven Health System are shared uh, for the right reasons, because of the attachment to clinical trials and, and everything else. And then some are based five days a week or full-time at Greenwich, like we have now.
Right, but you would, but you would plan to increase those numbers in general?
Um, I don't know, you know, I think it, it depends on the type of cancer. I think, you know, will there be more subspecialists uh, walking through the halls here? Absolutely.
Anything else, Ms. Jones?
Okay, thank you.
Patrick.
Um, looking at the floor plans, it appears that the square footage per treatment area is increasing that either the, the, the revision or the proposal looks like there's more, uh, larger rooms, so to speak, for, for the per patient. How does that, is that, is that true? Is, or is that, is that what, am I, am I looking at the plans correctly?
Right, right, we have, we have, we talked before about right sizing. Uh, so yes, standards have changed, so the infusions bays are larger than they currently are in the, in the Cohen Pavilion, yes.
So can you somehow correlate that to the increase in the number of patients that are going to be seen on the annual basis as you've provided it? Or whatever uh, number you want to, you know, whatever epic you want to use there. But, you know, how are we, how is the hospital seeing more people in the um, proposal uh, with less rooms, so to speak, and, and
I think, I, I think we have, I think going to 22 with 22 locations for infusion, I do think we have a net add. I'm not, I, I don't recall exactly what that net add is.
But Patrick, I think if you're asking, the, the rise in square footage per room was code-related. From when we built it originally to, to the standard that's today, the code for the allowable square foot for a patient treatment area has just increased in healthcare. That's not something that we did on, you know, at Greenwich. It was based on the code change.
But there, there is no correlation against to the services that you're going to be providing in the new center and how it relates to the outgoing stuff?
So the, the treatment uh, spaces for infusion and other areas are, are not specific to specialty or type of cancer, if you would.
Okay.
Folks, anything else? Ms. Jenkins.
Um, yeah, just to look at the numbers in Cohen. Um, it doesn't look like you're going to have an increased number of patient treatment locations in Cohen, though. Is that correct? I mean, you're, you're adding 22 infusion in the first floor of Watson. But if I'm counting Cohen, you've got six exam rooms on the second floor, six exam rooms, five um ultrasound and four mammal on the third floor, which I get 21. That, that sounds somewhat similar to what's there's now.
Yeah, so in, and that goes back to what was noted in the traffic and parking study. Is that with that right sizing and the shift, some of those services shift over to Watson. So there is a very slight decrease in the number of um, patient visits at bend time. Um, overall.
Okay, great. Right sizing is becoming my favorite word.
It, it applies to a lot of things.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from people? All right, so, um, what do we want to do from here?
That was the end of our affirmative presentation. We, we touched on everything, including the, the questions. The last slide I have was frankly where we started with the outstanding issues, so we're happy to go to the public if you want.
Uh, did we talk about the uh, beacons?
Sure.
I thought we already did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, that, but it's interesting, it's still in the back of your mind, because the question was, did we really want them? Because we were kind of iffy about them and we, we kind of changed our view in, in the middle. Okay, so, um, anybody who wishes to speak on any of these applications related to the hospital, just make sure we know which one you're, you're speaking about. This is Greenwich Hospital at um, 3 Perry Ridge Road at 38 Lake Avenue at 5 Perry Ridge and 77 Lafayette Place. Kindly raise your virtual hand and we will call on you. Uh, Barry Cohen is the first person. And if you would proceed, um, let's limit, I'm only seeing one person right now. Does anybody else wish to speak about uh, the hospital applications? That's what happens when it's not raining, right? All right, so Miss, so Barry Cohen is, is up and it's only one speaker, it looks like. And yes, if you would go ahead.
Yes, well, you wondered which, um, which thing I'm talking about. It's always going to be the traffic report, which affects all of those things.
Yep, that's, that's the reason we have it combined.
So I've been comparing the tie-in bond report from 2022 with the current one. And I have not been impressed by their traffic delay projections. Begin with, though, the thing that shocked me most, in 2022, the report mentioned the possible impact of this nearby development of it in the new cancer center. This is the one that was the proposed 192-unit, seven-story building between church and Sherwood above Route 1. Amazingly, they wrote, "The development is not anticipated to add significant traffic to the study area roadways." This is pretty close to the hospital, 192 units. Look, so that word right away shook my confidence. They also didn't uh, put it in the report because they said, you know, the PNZ didn't approve it and, and didn't expect to, so, uh, but that statement really shook me. But then I can get you more concrete uh, information here about their projections, uh, to see how reliable they are. So the new adaptive signal project, that's um, projected to reduce wait times at signaled intersection. And that throws off any comparison with 2022, so I'm going to focus on the Glenville Lake Avenue roundabout. So in 2022, the AM rush hour delay coming from Glenville Road, this is the most important one, was 18 and a half seconds back in 2022. And it was projected to be 25.1 seconds, seven seconds more, based on the entire new Smilow building and all of the extra traffic that it would cause. Well, in the 2024 study, which we now have, it was done in 2024, just presented, that same delay is already up to, where's, the spam calls keep coming, I'll just um, in, uh, it was projected to be 25.1 seconds. Now, in the 2024 study, we actually have information about the more current delay, which is up to 79 seconds. And that's without the new Smilow building, that it went up from 25 seconds to 79 seconds, way beyond anything that was tie-in bond projected. Uh, but a more extreme example is Deerfield Approach to the traffic circle coming up from Route 1. In 2022, the PM rush hour delay was 10.2 seconds. And it was projected to go up to 11.1 seconds based on all the new traffic trips for the new cancer building. Uh, well, now, that delay is listed by the latest tie-in bond report as 117 seconds, nearly two minutes, and projected to be about 138 seconds in 2025. So I ask you, how much trust should we have in any of TNB's projections? But my other uh, main point is about the roadways. So in the section 2.1, it's about, now, last time, I had mentioned that um, I thought it was quite suspicious that they didn't mention William Street at all, and I wanted them to mention William Street. It goes right into the same little traffic circle right near the hospital, not mentioned at all. And the reason why I think it should be mentioned, not in 2022 or 2025, when cars are parked on one-sided road, which is typical, it's really difficult for two cars to pass in opposite directions next to a parked car. So often people wait behind the parked car for the other person to pick. People have been very polite about that. I always do that. Um, and so it really slows things down, especially if you have a car that's parked about a foot away from the curb. And maybe it's an SUV, and then you have two SUVs, which we have a lot of them in, in Greenwich, but anyway. Um, and, you know, I could see the bias in the tie-in bond report. So for instance, they leave out some critical things. By the way, Church Street is a similar issue and still also relevant to the hospital traffic. But with respect to Perry Ridge Road, the report says, "In the vicinity of Greenwich Hospital, Lafayette Place and Perry Ridge Road is approximately 40 feet wide from curb to curb, including two travel lanes and onsite, on-street parking." This sounds good, except that they don't mention that Perry Ridge Road goes around a curve and rapidly narrows as you go north and has the same issues as William and Church with parking on one side of the street and people kind of slaloming around a, and finding it difficult to, uh, to get past people in waiting. And I'm not even mentioning Northfield and Patterson, which I often use to get to the Merritt. They're narrow and curvy and, and very residential and could be expected to receive increased volume. I know that was mentioned in the last time that this was talked about. Also, um, I remember that uh, Mr. Stern was asking about, he was really asking about the proportion of traffic coming from Glenville. That's a major route from people coming from Westchester. And so, in the 2022 report, uh, it was reported that they expected 25% of the traffic to be coming from that area. And now, in the 2025, it's down to 20%. Which seems a bit strange, because uh, it seems quite possible that the cancer center will draw more people from Westchester than the current hospital services do. Um, so that would only increase the traffic issues at that traffic circle. Um, and by the way, in the traffic report, they talk about, they mentioned that the combined level of service delay, uh, it can actually be lower than the background delay, which I don't understand at all, but that's kind of a technical uh, question. Um, so anyway, I think that's, that's my main point. I would, I would like to hear some response from Mr. Granatini, um, about any of these things. Since I'm trashing the tie-in bond report, which I have no respect for, I'm sorry to say. Look at it, they're just counting on you not reading the details.
All right, you don't need to trash anybody. We'll ask Mr. Granatini to ans, address those questions. This has always been, and I think that was the line of questioning that several people on the commission were pursuing. Um, all right, thank you. Um, so we're going to address that and um, I'm going to just have you go back into being an attendee. All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Granatini. All right, it's over and over again, uh, it, it's the same thing that Mr. Yesky was getting at as well, which is there is also the, the likelihood that you're going to have a far greater draw, or the hospital wouldn't be doing it. Um, before you start, Mr. Granatini, I think Ms. Jenkins would like to elaborate on the questions.
Um, yeah, I, I think particularly in, in terms of Mr. Cohen's comments, um that particular traffic circle, the one that involves Glenville and Deerfield and Lake Avenue. He listed in the report as being the second highest number of collisions uh, only after the, the post-road end of Deerfield. Um, and again, so the concern is, we already have, I mean, the, the traffic from Glenville, do not underestimate the traffic from Glenville, because that is in fact where the greatest backup is, particularly in the mornings. If you, if you, at any time between eight and 10, do people going to work and people taking their children to school and school bus stops? The traffic on Glenville will back up faster even than Deerfield. So, I'm, I'm, the, the flip side of Mr. Cohen's concern about delays is that when you have delays and people are in a hurry and there's heavy volume, you've already got 28.2% of the reported cl, uh, crashes uh, in your own report is, are related to that particular traffic circle. So obviously, there's got to be some concern. I don't know whether it involves perhaps slowing the, the, the problem is, the answer to that is to slow the approach and exit speeds from that, that traffic circle, which is going to increase your delays in the traffic circle. So you're kind of stuck where you've got a volume problem, but you also have a safety problem. And again, that, the, the traffic from Deerfield and Glenville and Lake Avenue, particularly Lake Avenue coming north, coming south into that uh, roundabout. And again, people, people don't pay attention, they don't yield, uh, especially when they're in a hurry. So I'm a little concerned again about the safety aspects of the increased volume, um, that's in that term, in that roundabout. So I'm a little concerned again about the safety aspects of the increased volume um that's in that term, in that uh roundabout.
So I'll try to kind of unpack things one at a time because there was a lot of commentary. So on the safety question, the intersection of Lake Avenue or Deerfield and Glenville Road, the traffic circle, um that intersection had thirty one total crashes between twenty twenty and twenty twenty four. With a peak of ten crashes in twenty twenty one, all other years were eight or less. Three of the, two of the years were four or four crashes and one was five. So generally, overall, it's a lower number of total crashes that are happening at that intersection relative to the total traffic volume that's happening there. Secondly, in a traffic circle like that, because of the way the traffic circle operates, you know, we're not seeing any of the more severe type of crashes that are, you know, dangerous to the driver. So there's a lot of property damage only. Um, and so when we look at crashes like this and when we look at a traffic circle that operates with slower moving vehicles, like I said in the previous hearing, we feel like this traffic control configuration is optimal for that location to seek some other type of traffic control that would process the traffic volumes that are going through there would probably require you to convert that intersection to a traffic signal. And I don't think that's what the community or the neighborhood wants. And so, you know, we feel as though that intersection operates efficiently most likely twenty three or twenty two hours out of the day. And then you've got some peak hour concerns when people are commuting through there. But the rest of the time, it operates efficiently. It doesn't have a high number of crashes. Um, and again, you're looking at total number of crashes percentage wise of the study area. But on a relative basis, thirty one crashes over four years is a very low number.
You guys, Mary, just let me just ask you something. I say, I I just ask you, Mary, when they talk, because you don't live too far away, but didn't everybody stop going to the hospital except for staff during those years, during two of those years? Because you couldn't go visit people, right? Who were in the hospital?
And that all elective surgery was out. So the the hospital occupation, the occupancy of the hospital during COVID, um with the heroic efforts of the hospital staff, I might say. But i- it wasn't a fully occupied and fully operational hospital for a fairly significant period of time. And I have to say that I I'm I'm beginning to sound like like um Dr. Cohen, but I'm sorry, you know. I I understand that you're looking at it from a practical point of view. But Mister Cohen and I are looking at it from a point of view of delay and potential and potential damage. And I I have to go back to G thirty eight, you know, thirty four crashes and X is fine, except if you happen to be one of the people who's in the neighborhood or is involved in a crash. I just want there to be an elevated sensitivity to the fact that whatever happens with the new building, whatever you have in the traffic circle, and I agree, signals will never work there because there's too much traffic from every direction. But be sensitive to the fact that the increase in potential in potential use of that traffic circle is something that needs to be kept an eye on. In addition to the traffic, the parking use and the other aspects, you have people using more cars from all directions through that traffic circle. So again, I I appreciate the fact you're being practical and I'm saying I'm worried about people and and crashes and and delays. So that's my job. But thank you.
Understood, and we do a significant amount of safety engineering work across the state of Connecticut. It's forefront of our minds. And if there was a an injury issue at this location, we would probably identify that and point out that there were opportunities to improve it. But like I said, there's.
And I and I guess what I'm saying is, I I hope that you will see this as a continuing opportunity to review it, given the fact that things are changing. Um, thank you.
But Mister Granatini, y- y- you don't have data. So you're looking at it as a safety issue, but we're assuming that, I mean, you're looking at twenty through twenty four. And that was data that should have lower, that would those were periods where there should be lower numbers.
Not twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. I mean, we're we're back to normal conditions the last.
And twenty four, I would give you that argument, but I I don't, I think that off and on what you've had, I don't remember twenty two being a normal traffic year. I know twenty four was definitely normal, but I don't remember twenty two being normal. But again, so the thing is, but I think the broader issue is as you all move forward with this, over and over again, what we keep raising is, if you're successful, there may be a lot of stress in these areas. You may find that you are parking deficient and you may find that you have brought in a lot of traffic. And and right now, we're looking at the application before us with the assumptions that you are making about your operations. And um, it's probably not why uh Mister Kozak meant to nod, but what troubled me the most about this, this this whole process is everything is based on your operating assumptions. And we are say, we look at the data that you have about patient load and what's going to happen. And none of us know, you or us, whether that's going to pan out the way you're anticipating. Even if your every intent is to be completely transparent with us, you have no way of knowing. And so our job is to raise the concern. So I think to the commission, the question is, is there any way? And to the applicant, that we might proactively think about this. I that I think that um Mary just touched on this, and that is you're going to see if people get hurt. You're going to see what happens at the intersections. You're going to see when you get tight for parking. And what would we would want to see happen is that you be proactive about it and that you come back and talk to us about it. Because we know that there were times when the valet thing was insane in the old garage. And you couldn't even get valet and the valet would tell you, I mean, everybody has lived that. So the thing is, for us all, if as we're considering this, is that you all just, no matter what, consider being proactive and coming back and saying, look, we are seeing a rise in crashes. And Patrick, I don't know how we can track it. I'll stop talking, let Mary go first, and then Patrick, if you have a comment.
Yeah, I mean, that um Greenwich Hospital is very good at testing uh community sentiment from time to time. And it just seems to me that one of the best things, and I I'm not advising the hospital here, but in terms of monitoring the the progress with the new with the new facility, if it's approved, uh or the new uh configuration, if it's improved, just check with your patients. Did you have trouble parking? Did you understand where to go? I, where did you come from? Was was it harder to come from Glenville, harder to come from Westchester than it was from ninety five?
And you do, and they do, you do satisfaction surveys, right? You must. I know I've seen them.
We we definitely do, and those questions are asked on the satisfaction surveys.
Yeah, and the thing is, nobody was, go ahead, Mary, I'm sorry, I kind of interrupted, but I assume that they do it. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, and I'm just saying that 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 sort of thing will tell, will tell you, you're kind of monitoring indirectly exactly the issues that we're raising.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, Patrick, you were going to say something?
I think you asked me a question, but.
I can chime in on the question, Patrick. And the safety data is readily available. Um, it's it's published by the Connecticut Crash Repository. And if you wanted to see what was happening in any location, that data is kind of publicly available. So that's the way.
As, yeah, so we could, that you're saying, yeah, we could track it ourselves. And that's right, we would go to, we would ask people. Um, Patrick was going to answer, and then Peter Low, and then Ann O.
Well, I think we have done um post uh post construction analyses, um which, you know, you know, hopefully, most of the time, they they validate the analysis. But again, the question is always, what happens if the analysis was incorrect? Or circumstances have changed and there's a different uh traffic volume or or what have you or direction in the area? And what does the commission get to do or what does the commission want to do to address that? Because certainly um it would need cooperation, the applicant. But again, if we're talking things like more parking, um, that plan would need to be sort of fleshed out now, right? And not later. Um, so i- it it all depends on what the goal is of the commission as the uh, you know, either va- validating the the study or uh if there is issues, having a contingency plan on more valet, uh alternative parking plans, et cetera. What what are we gonna, what are we gonna do?
What are your suggestions?
I'm assuming that's to the commission, right?
No, I'm asking you.
Oh, well, I I mean, I think, I think the study validation helps to just corroborate the the analysis. I mean, again, I understand people have a a high uh skepticism on hypothetical studies of future traffic. I I can appreciate why people would. I mean, we we don't do this in a vacuum, the commissioner, I mean, we we have uh equal credentials reviewing it on the other end and validating at least the analysis from the from the, as it's presented. And then also the 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 conclusion, I guess it's, you know, you, although it's never really done, but you know what I'm saying? That the the ultimate response that the uh proposing engineer has. Um, so again, you know, I I don't think, I've not had an issue, well, I say, I say the commission has not had an issue uh from an applicant saying that they wouldn't be willing to uh verify or validate the study. Um, but again, um, knowing the facilities here, I'm I'm sort of at a blank to figure out what would be the alternative. There's already valet, so would there be more valet and where? Well, you know, what, there's sort of limited opportunities to improve the, you know, the traffic flow, the parking flow.
It's a really obvious answer that you eventually have to build uh another parking structure.
Right, but again, how do we implement that?
No, I mean, I think it's just a question of keeping the dialogue going. I I at this point, we have raised the questions about and I about the future. And hopefully, um, we will keep the dialogue going with the hospital to see how this evolves, depending on how we decide this.
Well, in in light of recent legislation, I think, you know, there's a strong sentiment that the market will fix itself. So perhaps that's the answer, but.
Yeah, but again, that that only applies to residential parking. Um, so um, I think that uh the keeping the dialogue open and them and them following and them surveying and them seeing if they're doing well. Okay, let's turn over.
Well, yeah, sorry, I don't want to end it. I just, I think if if I I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding from the from the application team. So I think there's an understanding that they don't want to create an exacerbate a situation. So I, you know, I think there's some mutual um agreeable conclusions here. But I I I maybe we want to ask them or want to get the commission's thoughts first.
Well, um, I'll tell you what. Anecdotally, we have a great example for the hospital to bear in mind. You all know, as we said here, that our preceding town planner's husband died of cancer. Um, and we lived it with her. And she um went to Yale because um she had to go up to Yale because they couldn't do the treatment in Greenwich. They couldn't do his formulation in Greenwich. She tried going to Cornell. And even though there was a protocol that might have been more successful at Cornell, guess what? It was so difficult to park, to get there and to park, that she walked away from one of the top people in the world in the very narrow thing that this guy had. So you all know that if you can't accommodate your patients in a way that makes them comfortable when they are ill, they are going to walk away from you and go somewhere else. And you all know where your neighbors are building facilities. You know that Fairfield has that new center. You know that M S K um, or if you call them Sloan. But um you know that M S K is next door. So you know those guys are there and they're going to compete with you. So the traffic and the parking, it is up to you to handle it. The market should, you are the market and you should handle it. Um, so that is all you're doing right now is you're making some assumptions about how it's going to work out. But at the end of the day, it is going to be up to you all to make sure that you can give people the comfort and the ease when they're ill. Um, that's basically what I got. But um, you know, we saw it. And um several of us were on the commission at the time and we saw the issues. And we were talking to you at the time. So we were living it and we couldn't share that, but we were living it and we knew what the trade offs were. Close up. Um, Mister Low.
Yeah, I I guess we don't really need to uh beat this horse. But uh it would beho- I essentially would behoove the hospital to conduct their own internal reviews of how how things are going, is what we're saying. To benefit itself, not to satisfy a commission. And uh.
And they and they know that.
And and we hear, just analogous to this, we hear nothing but very rosy traffic um impact.
From every applicant, you guys.
Everyone, now, not, i- it's incredible.
Nobody has ever come to the commission and said, you know what, this is going to be a real mess after.
Yeah, no, 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 we're going to add uh three thousand units, but it turns out the traffic's going to be less. Uh, it's it's improbable. Uh, anyway, so I, again, we're uh we're all saying basically the same thing. But uh if you're all going to be successful, you have to resolve this upfront and not just to satisfy this commission.
That's really the message. And no.
So one other thing I want to add regarding the traffic is that with the signalization plan for the post road, I do have some concerns as it prioritizes traffic on the post road that we actually end up with a backup on those on the streets that feed into the post road and particularly those intersections that are around the hospital. So I think that's something that I just asked that also, as you analyze this stuff and you look at what's going on in the future, you also take that into account when that starts to happen.
I can tell you that Condat already prioritizes traffic on the post road and the
Yeah, we know that.
And the adaptive signal system will allow those traffic signals to adjust accordingly if there isn't as much traffic on the post road. So that's how the, how you gain that efficiency by being more adaptive to what's out there.
Yeah, we we know that, Mister Granatini. I think we're we're expressing somewhat lower confidence in the D O T than than you might think we would have. But um, no, Ms. Suchins, you're not allowed to laugh. Um, so um, we know that 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 they prioritize Route One, much to our being baffled sometimes at how they do it. Um, Ms. Jones, anything else?
Oh, and I I agree that you can tell that there are times it's being prioritized and you're not really sure why when the the stoplight.
I was more diplomatic.
Okay, sorry.
You never know when somebody's listening. I don't want to hurt their feelings. Mister Yeski.
Yeah, I guess a couple of comments. Well, um, where are you going with this? Are we thinking about conditioning something that says, and we've done this in other applications?
Yeah.
You have to come back and after you get fully operated, you have to come back in six months and show us the results of various surveys and redo the traffic. And is that where we're going with that?
Because I think that's what we need to talk about. If, you know, when we get to the point where we're ready to decide this, is are there any conditions that we would want to put on it? Or do we not? And we just say um, the applicant knows their business and we're hoping that it works out. You know, it doesn't sound like us, but you never know. Um, so yeah, that's the question we're laying out there is how do we, how do we position this? Any thoughts on that, Mister Yeski?
No, it is, because as I said earlier, I I don't think anybody can tell what's going to happen. I I hope they are successful. That will, you know, that'll probably enlarge their market area. And as a result, the traffic's going to be coming from far, further away and overloading some streets. But I can't predict any of that at this point in time.
No, because we also know that every major institution is doing the same strategy that Yale is.
And that might control, that's that's the other side of it. It might control their expansion.
Yeah.
Uh, and that would be a good from a traffic standpoint, not good from their business standpoint at this point. I I would like to make one point. Um, the situation you described earlier, we actually um uh. The situation you described earlier, we actually, um, uh, rejected two other proposals because um, this is important, I think, in this case, we didn't want more, we didn't want the expansion of the hospital, is it?
That's right.
The simplest way to say it. And it, it was too much expansion, which adds all this. This application is different. Not speaking for it in the sense, but they're removing.
It's a different thing. It that they are removing and they are putting it on site and that is what they've, and that was our suggestion at the time.
It was, it was, and they did it. And, um, wish we hadn't been sued so much, but we'll, we'll, we'll forgive them.
Don't worry about that.
Uh, but no, I think it's important.
Suchin's needed the work.
Yeah, it whereas we were concluding before, too much traffic, too little parking, too much expansion. Uh, we're still going to debate the traffic. You don't know. They're showing interesting numbers, but i- if they're successful, they're going to keep expanding and the traffic is going to go up at some point in time. And yeah, the monitoring idea is a, is a good, is a good solution to that.
And and also the, the confidence that they're going to be more proactive about it.
Well, we tell them that they need to come back to us.
Right.
Uh, and if we, and I like this, at some other point, we were allowed not to do this. I can't remember exactly, but um, it's a good idea and a lot. I mean, we can, I can think of some restaurants that would be interesting. Um, I could think, but this large facility and an important one, so it makes all the more sense to say, we just need to monitor this because you're at part of capacity. You're taking others away, thank God. Uh, but no, it's a good idea.
Madam Jenkins.
Yeah, and I, just to, to also say that, um, there's already existing a neighborhood advisory council. So, uh, the hospital has ways to kind of ask the neighbors periodically. I don't know how often you have meetings, but ask the neighbors periodically, you know, what do you see? Have you gotten complaints? I mean, that's kind of the purpose of the council, as I understand it. So it seems to me that between perhaps customer surveys and your advisory council, that's a way to just take natural input, if you will, from people who are most affected by it. And then if there's an additional kind of scientific level to that or formal reporting to, to the commission, I think that would be great.
I think there is more science here. They can, they can tabulate parking demand by space. I mean, I assume that they started that already. I mean, in those, in other words, they can without, you know, when you test traffic and you test parking, they're doing spot checking. It's kind of like once here, once here. But the reality is, as people come into all those parking, they can monitor all of that. It's parking management systems. And they can determine whether they indeed have a parking issue at what time of the day, all, you know, twenty four seven. So there is a science part of this thing. Uh, when you do customer surveys, you, you tend to get, uh, the extremes. So that's good also.
Negative comments because people always comment negatively.
Right. That's good because then that highlights some of the issues, but they should be able to show us in the future the parking utilization, uh, because there's, there's a lot of moving parts here. And, um, you know, and just prove out what their theory is that they think they've moved out enough operations to make this work in the neighborhood without, um, the, well, we'll see, but I don't know whether you do a net sum zero, but the, the, the feeling is they're moving an awful lot out that leaves the neighborhood, your neighborhood, and they're bringing some new people on, but it, the numbers seem to say that that's not going to be as big a problem. As the other, the first application was, they were adding everything and, and the facility was bigger. And that just was a, a nonstarter. So yeah, I I think there's a lot they could come back and report, given how special this zone is. This is a very unique zone in town.
Mr. Low.
Yeah, I just, uh, uh, not to drag this out, but the, as, as important as traffic and parking were as elements of, of our concerns in, uh, previous iterations of, um, of the hospitals, uh, uh, applications. Uh, a, a major concern, it was the impact of the growth of the hospital on the, the residential neighborhood. So by, I, I think the assumption, the underlying assumption of our recommendation to the hospital back when uh, concerning trying to move these services into the existing structures and facilities was to, uh, not incur appreciable growth uh, that would, uh, occasion additional traffic and, and parking and impact on the neighborhood. So we're, we're hoping that that's what happens and that, that the, you know, ideally that th- these plans will not, um, end up, uh, causing more issues than we wanted, as we were concerned about, uh, in earlier applications.
Oh, there's somebody from the public who has raised their hand. Um, I'm, if you guys don't mind, it sounds, no, I did not switch to a, Zoom just asked me if I was still s- speaking English.
It's questionable, no, right?
I, I distinctly heard Spanish. I'm sorry.
Zoom. Or traffic jargon.
Um, we're just going to take one more person to come in and then, um, we're going to wrap up.
Zoom, good, they think, they can detect your thoughts, Margarita, and you were thinking in Spanish.
Yeah.
So, um, Nicole Salermo had sent us an email uh, with some photos. The commission will receive them. Ms. Salermo, we, um, we had already ended the public comment, but since we're about to wrap up, um, if you would go ahead. Um, hello, and the whole commission does have, um, your email, and I hope we can hear you. Go ahead. Is your microphone on?
No, you gotta test your mic, please.
Are you talking? Ms. Salermo?
She is talking, but we can't hear her.
We can't hear you. Um, see if you can find the little audio setting um, with a little Chevron next to it on your screen and if you can, there you go.
Okay, you can hear me?
There you go.
Okay, um, I just, I, I know this might not be the appropriate time because it's a little heated, but I, I do sit on the neighborhood committee with the hospital, um, and I do, um, participate and appreciate the feedback that we get during those meetings. We all know who live in this neighborhood. We share it with the hospital. We share it with Brunswick. Um, we share it with Greenwich Academy. Greenwich Academy and Brunswick are very responsive if there's any issues with parking, speeding, you know, students parking in the wrong places. What we find a little bit with the hospital is, um, there's always a parking issue and there's always overcrowding. We on Division Street understand the idea of this gate to slow the flow of traffic, but it's still the same amount that bleeds out of Three Perry Ridge. With that said, I think we've been very, they, the hospital has been good neighbors to us. They've been very responsive and understanding. We just ask for very simple things, right? This is a bigger issue than, you know, many of us understand. Division Street's deemed a dead end, but we share a parking lot. And so the patients who come out of that doctor's office come onto Division, we get that. Sometimes there's overflow. If people want to cut through, we get a lot of that too. If you're going to put the gate up, I just ask that there are two homes that abut that parking lot with families. One, in fact, has young children. And all we've ever asked to, you know, the two people who we speak to during these, um, neighborhood council meetings is put up some privacy hedges for us, you know, make it like it's still a neighborhood instead of it turning into like a second parking lot. It's supposed to be a historical neighborhood. Our street is very narrow. Um, it's not, you know, it's not what it once was. And I can say this in all certainty. I moved up here in twenty seventeen. I lived through the pa- uh, the, the pandemic here. Um, it has become difficult for us to walk around the neighborhood at all hours of the day. So it shouldn't even be a question that another crosswalk be put in on Lake Street. That is a no brainer. Not only for people who are coming to the hospital and are patients, for, for people who live here. So whatever the hospital can do to make this livable, not only for patients, but for the people who do care about where they're living, that's all we ask. So, thank you for taking my, my last minute. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh. Um, okay. Um, so that, that is the last of the public comment. Um, I can't move her out of the meeting, Patrick. I froze her, but I can't move her out of the meeting for some reason. Maybe because I didn't ask in English. Um, okay, so we've heard all the public comment. We've made all the comments. Um, we've got these three applications before us. Uh, let me go one by one, uh, given how we introduced them. The first one, Three Perry Ridge, is the commission, um, wanting to close it or leave it open? And then we would have to ask for an extension.
Uh, I'm good to close.
Anybody else?
I'm good too.
Check to closing.
Okay, not at all.
Okay, all right. So that application, um, let me just ask it in a better way. Does anybody object to closing Three Perry Ridge at this time?
No.
All right, no objections. The next application is Thirty Eight Lake Avenue. Does anyone object to closing this application at this time?
No.
All right, so that one is closed. Now, Greenwich Hospital. Um, that's also a must close at this time. There is an extension available. Um, but the applicant would have to grant it. What do you all want to do with it?
I'm good with closing, but I'm just, you know, one vote. I, I think I have all the information I need.
Anybody else?
I think we move to close and we can talk about conditions.
Okay. Mr. McRae?
Uh, I'm good to close, but I'm, I would like to, uh, defer decision.
Okay.
Um, there are some outstanding issues I need to get wrapped my head around.
Okay.
Um, although, uh, it was represented that they're okay with sewer flows um, and the sewer conditions. Um, I do remember the, some of the sewer conditions of the first application. And, uh, there was potential, um, a large scale infrastructure that may have been required for that one. I just want to make sure that we're not going to get into the same kind of an issue. Uh, and if we do, I just want to make sure that any kind of a uh, notes or decisions, we may kind of reflects that. So we, we're all on the same page. Because I think that may be one aspect that may be significant, but we really can't plan for it until we have all that information from Sewer Division.
Okay, and I feel that way about some of the other factors that we've, I feel like I'd like to chew a little bit on some of the other issues we've talked about. Um, anybody object to closing it?
No, you didn't ask me, but I'm, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
No, I am. I'm asking you, anybody object to closing it? I'm asking everybody.
No.
No, Mr. Low?
I'm fine. I just, I'm fine with this.
And to not deciding it at this time and waiting.
I think that's a, a, a good path.
All right, okay. So, um, any objection to closing, uh, the applications at Five Perry Ridge and Seventy Seven Lafayette Place at this time?
No.
You're hearing no objections. This application is hereby closed. All right, folks, um, so we will act on the first two tonight. And, uh, we will, um, act probably in two weeks on the other one, on the big one. It just gives us time to chew on it a little bit. And that's all I got. Anything else? Ms. Suchins?
I was just going to wrap up. I'm not sure if you technically closed five and seventy seven. Um, but I have a couple of comments.
Oh, sure. So I can re-close it if you want to, if you want to open it. We'll just re-close it.
Okay, uh, just because there was some of the, the discussion, uh, among the commission members, I just wanted to sort of highlight a couple of things. Um, we do, as, as noted, um, have the quarterly, uh, meetings with the neighborhood advisory commission. Um, I, like you, get lots of patient surveys from, um, the, uh, Yale New Haven Health System overall. And I think they lead right into the discussion that you were having about, um, you know, we have as much concern about our success and our ability to make sure that, um, kind of harkening back to that discussion we had about um, operations in the parking garage and making sure there is capacity, making sure it's convenient. Because as you noted, um, if somebody is, you know, not going to think about all the things that involve care, even if it's close or there's a reason to come, if it's not useful, it's not practical, um, it's going to be counterproductive, um, for, for us. Um, and so I think, you know, just the reminder as you go into deliberations, um, our parking utilization and what we talked about was again, based on the completely full capacity of this building. So we expect that, you know, um, we tried to be very conservative in that approach. We know you wanted to think about, um, you know, what the traffic impact was, what the parking concerns were. And so that is why the direction to, um, the tie and bond report was to look at our maximum capacity for the building and it still showed, um, that. But certainly, I, like you, have had situations where if you wanted to have, um, some sort of reporting back, um, about parking utilization, I've had situations where if there was a problem, the report with the utilization suggests a conclusion, um, you know, we want to add additional valet space or we want to do something. So I don't think you have to make, um, that a, you know, that result, um, a condition of approval. I do think that if you wanted to have the reporting back and if there is an issue, that we need to come back with a solution. Um, and that way we can have that opportunity to, to discuss. Because I think, again, kind of coming back to the idea of, um, you know, we're in a hospital zone, we recognize, um, based on your prior comments through the regulations themselves. Um, it's a unique regulation, not only for this particular town. It's frankly not something I've seen anywhere else kind of thing in Connecticut. So, um, we're, we're certainly aware of that. And I think, um, trying to evaluate all of that, um, kind of ties in. So that's really it. I know Mark Kozak just wanted to sort of give a quick, um, wrap up of, you know, everything you heard and, and the importance of this to the hospital. So with that, Mark.
Great. Thank you, Amy, and thank you to the commission. So just as, uh, Benheim has served Greenwich residents for more than thirty years, Greenwich Hospital seeks to continue providing premier oncology services for the next thirty years. This requires modernization as we've shown in the plans before you. Our applications have drawn on past comments from both the commission and neighbors. We have listened to you both and have done exactly what was asked of us. The hospital has found a way to place certain programs in offsite facilities, avoid any zone changes and not construct a new freestanding building. We ask the commission to remember its own words. This decision impacts lives. The fact remains that cancer numbers are increasing and we must be able to care for patients in our communities utilizing the highest level of care with the latest technology and experts to treat them. Our proposal does not increase the size of our hospital, but better utilizes the space we have. And we are confident that you'll support us in our mission to provide the ca- the best cancer care possible that the residents of Greenwich deserve and need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I, I th- thank you, Ms. Suchins, because that was a good, a good summary of what you guys have put before us and gives us a chance to, um, we just want to think things through and to be honest, no matter what our decision, we spend a lot of time when we make these motions thinking about how they will provide guidance for future commissions, applicants. What is in the letter? What is in the motion? And that it provides guidance so people can come back in a few years, depending on your outcome, and say, okay, here's what was there at the time. Here's what was said and here's how we can now be proactive and move forward. We've become much more conscious of that. Because we found sometimes you look at a decision letter and you're like, I wonder what they were thinking. And you've got to go back to the transcript to try to pull it together and that is a hassle. So we try to, that's a lot of the, the reason we're, we're, I'm more comfortable waiting. Okay, so now that we've truly gotten the wrap up and I hope, Mr. Basili, that looks okay in the transcript. Um, does anybody object to closing the applications at Five Perry Ridge Road and Seventy Seven Lafayette Place at this time?
No objection.
Hearing no objection, this, these application is therefore closed and we're going to be done with it. All right, again, thank you all of, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick, I almost removed you from the meeting. That would have been funny, right?
Night off.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so my guess is we're a good hour to do, to do 2:40. A good hour. It'll take us to do 2:40. So you want to go ahead and give it a stab and, and take dinner after that application?
Yes.
Okey dokey. All right.
Let's not go more than an hour. How's that?
Okay. All right, Mr. Tessie. And then we will. And we heard these together, right, everybody? Last time?
Yep.
Oh, and again, I'm sorry. Ms., Ms. Dawson Jones would be in for me. Right?
Yes, she would indeed. Yes, she would. Yep, okay. All right. Our next two applications we're hearing together based on how we did, did the record, our last hearing of these, these matters. 240 G A LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone the property at 240 Greenwich Avenue from the CGB and CGBR zones to the CGBR HO for a 1.32 acre property located at 240 Greenwich Avenue. The next one is 240 G A LLC for a final site plan and special permit to construct a new residential building of 37,259 square feet with 12 units, 48 bedrooms and two levels of parking below, providing 49 spaces for those units. Oh, and no, it's not just for the units. That's right. And that's a 1.32 acre property, as we said. Mr. Tessie, if you wish to proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the commission. I did listen, excuse me, did observe or listen and listen to your staff briefing yesterday. So I am aware of your individual comments and collective thoughts. As you know, we were last before you, the end of your second February meeting, I think the 25th. And the matter was left open primarily for, my opinion primarily, for us to proceed with a presentation to the Historic District Commission, which we ultimately did in this month, earlier this month. And at that time, we presented a revised building plan for the proposed 12-unit three-story residential building. That revised plan was shared with your staff and also commented upon by, by staff and commission members yesterday. The idea of the architect, the design architect was to try to embrace what I'll call a balance between the historic building to the east and the residential brick building to the west, that being the Harborview condominium, who have had a a position of interest, let's just say, in how this application plays out in a number of regards, particularly as to density and, and architecture in that building. It's been a collaborative effort actually between the parties, those particular parties. That is our principal, Mr. Ferrari and the members of the board of the Harborview condominium. The presentation before the HDC is in the interplay with, with the HDC members is, I think, well written in Mr. Malillo, the Secretary of HCC's memorandum to the commission, which I believe you've all reviewed and read and, and obviously commented upon during your session yesterday. When we concluded with the HDC and after having listened to their, what I'll call constructive criticisms, it was understood that the design architect and also the in-house architect for Mr. Ferrari, Mr. Molnar, would work to address those what I'll call constructive criticisms with the hope that they could get done in time for perhaps a supplementary submission to the Planning and Zoning Commission before this meeting. But that simply did not happen. Those plans are.
It would have been very helpful if you had agreed to their voting. If you hadn't told them you would get an extension from us, I don't know what you were thinking about, Mr. Tessie.
I'm not, I'm not, I, okay, let's back up a second. I don't, I don't understand the relevance.
They wanted to make them, the HDC wanted to make a motion at that meeting and you told them it was not, I don't remember exactly your wording. I don't have the, the minutes open that it wasn't necessary that you would get an extension. And that's not possible. We are at a must close right now. And so.
I know, I know where, I know where we are and I corrected, and I corrected myself when we had that discussion. I don't think the point was about a motion. What I was saying, what I was saying to them was that we wanted to get, in, in essence, what we wanted to do was get the plans right. Because that's what we need to do going back to the commission. And if we're going to need more time with the commission, in essence, we're going to find a way to get it.
Okay, so you're going to withdraw and reapply?
The, sorry, someone knocked on my door. The options that I heard you discuss yesterday and knowing the time periods that it's going to take after having discussed this matter with Mr. Molnar, the matter specifically being when we thought we'd be able to get those plans in, in the, in the kind of shape needed to make a thorough presentation to the HDC basically means that we won't be able to be before the HDC until its July meeting. Therefore, while you can discuss certain options, closing and leaving the matter open, not open, closing the matter and not deciding until a statutory period required expires, did not seem practical to us. We had a discussion among myself, Mr. Ferrari and Mr. Molnar. And I also spoke to Mr. LaRoe a few hours ago. And essentially concluded that the, the best route for everybody was to withdraw the application and, and promptly refile with the commission so that no one's under extreme pressure and there is time to take a step back, review, that is for both the HDC and the Planning and Zoning Commission, the total program, have a chance to comment and allow the commission to have as in the Planning and Zoning Commission, to have as an informed decision from a material standpoint as possible. So that, right now, we're in a position where we believe we'll be back before you and like to be back before you. Patrick, if possible, at your second meeting in July, which would be, I think, the 29th?
I'm sorry, how are you going to do that, Mr. Tessie?
The 20, the 22nd.
Mr. Tessie, how are you going to come back to us on an application that we've closed?
No, he's going to withdraw and refile.
I said I'm withdrawing the application.
All right.
Sorry, maybe I, I, I had too many words in my sentences.
Yeah, sometimes.
I'll make them briefer. Yes, we will withdraw the application and give us time to get to that meeting in, in July and enough time to have a thorough presentation. We may even have some by-play with the HDC, which they said they'd be happy to comment along the way in terms of getting sketches. That's with the HDC, not you, obviously. But we'll keep Mr. LaRoe informed. And we would be able to be back to the commission basically the next Tuesday after that meeting on the, so that meeting. So that would be the, I believe, the 22nd of July. That would be our, our goal. We would have the materials ready a few weeks before the HDC meeting. And we, we would file with you before then, actually in the next week or so. Just any other, there were some engineering issues that Mr. DeAndrea is working on. But overall, there were relatively few issues that any of the other supporting departments indicated needed to be addressed at this time. So it allows us to clean up things, give you a ability to step back and deal with other matters as we go through the process here and hopefully come up with a, a building. Basically, in terms of its facade, not going to see any material changes to the, to the building itself in terms of its superstructure. But it's facade in order that, for everyone to feel comfortable that this building's in the right place, looking the way it should look. Saying it very succinctly. And so I don't see us going an hour this evening, by, by the way.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Mr. McRae, you have your, you have your hand up and then Mr. Yaski.
Yes, Mr. LaRoe, Mrs. Kulcoski, question about procedure. Mr. Tessie is going to go back to HDC with alternate designs. Would it be appropriate for us, this commission, to be informed of those designs as a discussion item? I'm quite concerned about this back and forth we have going with the HDC sometimes. I'd like us to be on the same page. If they're seeing something new, I'd like to know what that new is. So when it comes back to us as a reapplication, I'm not seeing something for the first time after it's fully baked.
Well, I, I would say, Mr. McRae, that nothing's fully baked until you, the commission makes action on it. So I think it would be appropriate for the HDC to, granted, if, if you wanted to give thoughts or guidance or pass on desires to the design to them, you're full within your rights under the regulations to suggest that. But that, I, I, I would recommend that they go and, and get that with your critiques included and then come back to us and not do us first and the commission first and then the.
Well, no, 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 I didn't, I didn't, I was thinking it was concurrently, is that we could see what they're going to see. So we know what, what they know.
Mr. McRae, I already volunteered that. I agree 100% with what you said.
I, I will, I, I will answer that. I, what I heard Mr. Tessie say is that he is going to withdraw the application, refile with the materials, he's going to go back to the HDC with. So we'll have a application pending that I can certainly preview to the commission before it gets to a public meeting. And then, and then they'll go to the HDC and then come back to the commission at a meeting in July.
And we welcome any advanced comments that the commission members may have. Let me add that also.
Okay, I think that's the most appreciated, Mr. Tessie, seeing as the committee members have concerns on this, the building's architecture. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Yaski?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board with, that was going to be one of my questions, but I, when's the next meeting of the HDC?
July.
July, I just had it, sorry, Mr. Yaski. I believe it is July 9th.
They only meet once a month.
So before we see it, I think particularly given this building, and I think there's a significant decision here that the HDC needs to make. It's a historic building on the avenue going to a residential. I'm very anxious about the topic today. So assuming that they have a vote on that day, I'd like to, I'd like to see it all along. But to seriously look at this, we really need some more positive comments out of the HDCs before we meet again. And I'm assuming that happens on the 9th. If there's some reason, then maybe we delay meeting with the applicant again.
Well, let me say, let me volunteer this. If in fact, we have, we're not able to conclude with the HDC for whatever reason, obviously, not obviously, but, but we certainly are not going to come to this agency, this commission with a with a material questions yet to be answered to the satisfaction of the HDC. I agree with you.
Okay.
Then there will be.
Thing right now, so I'm trying to prevent that happening again.
Right.
It wasn't a matter of that. Let me correct something because it's probably my fault. We asked them to, to provide the minutes. We agreed with that to show you where we were with them. There, there was no intention on our part to come to this meeting this evening and, and, and expect to ram through an approval by this commission. This was the last opportunity to speak to you before, you know, before we were closed out, so to speak, one way or the other. It's all we were doing. That's why I said we're not going to be an hour. We're telling you, I spoke to Patrick earlier and discussed the game plan. And I, I think it's one that is, is the only way to go. So it wasn't a great insight on my part.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is I would like some specific comments from the HDC before we see this application again.
Well, yeah, absolutely. I mean, this has to go back to the HDC because they knew from reading the minutes, they, they knew what they were looking for. They knew what they wanted. By the way, there's a bunch of them here at the meeting now. So just to tell you guys, I lost, oh, that's funny. I could have sworn. Okay, so, but here now is, we have Jenny Larkin and we also have Philip James Dodd. And I thought we had a couple of other people and suddenly I'm not seeing them. But absolutely, this has to go back to the HDC. They have to review it and they have to confirm their opinion on the HO. We need that from them. And that's what I was reproaching Mr. Tessie for is it was left open-ended, that there were changes they wanted at the last meeting and those hadn't been implemented yet. And they could have, and Tessie didn't want them to vote on it, or that's how I read those minutes. So the question then is, yes, it has to go to HDC. It goes to HDC in July and we get something that is satisfactory to them. To, to go down to the brass tacks, there seemed to be, and HDC is here so we can ask them, but there seemed to be two big design questions, historical appropriateness and whatever. Should the building have reference to the, to the, across the street and adjoining apartment buildings? And therefore be heavier on the brick and more like those in windows? Or should it connect somehow to the front building on, the fronting building on Greenwich Avenue and have some limestone and the, on the arch, the curved, the arched windows? I see that as like, kind of the crux of it, and I'm sure people will correct me if I'm wrong. And there is the comment that I picked up in a couple of places where folks were seeing it as looking at, looking also like too much of a commercial building of an office rather than the residential appearance of Harborview and what's the other one called? I get the names wrong, but you know, the two apartment buildings there.
Across the street.
So, yeah, so, so it's that it looks more like it fits with that adjoining office, that office that's in the middle, that office structure that's in the middle. And those are the, those are the issues. I believe everybody's looking for it to be more residential in appearance, softer. And then the, the question is, we had talked about having more limestone and the arched windows. That is not clearly unanimous with the HDC. And it's, my temptation is to let them decide. But that is, why don't we see what happens with it? And when they get it back in July? And when they get it back in July. Okay, so that's Dennis. Anything else?
No, what, I'm still in post-mortem here about the new bill out of Hartford. If that forces other buildings to be built.
No, no, forget, forget that, forget that for right now. Just focus on this application before you.
Avenue is, is historic. There's a lot of.
There's a lot of stuff that's different.
About when you attach a new building to an old building.
Ah, that's the question. You are actually not attaching a new building to an old building. You are attaching, you are adding a new building to the same lot on which there is a newish building and a very old building. It's very different. Very different from the Department of the Interior guidelines. You are not attaching this new residential building to the historic structure. That's super important. So when you think about it, think about the fact that you're not adding on to it. Okay. Anything else, Dennis?
No.
Okay, Mr. Wells, Mr. Low, and then Ms. Jones.
Yeah, I, I sort of say, we said it yesterday that I don't think the commission was unanimous in this feeling that limestone was the way to go, that some of us, me included, are looking to have more reference to the residential, which would include the brink. I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wells, because I think, I think the same, that you are not the only one to have said that, if you put together HTC and P and Z. Mr. Low. You're muted, so you can't say anything else that's brilliant. You're muted. You've got, you're muted. Okay.
Probably all the best lines are gone. I, I only have a few brilliant things to say, and I've already said them. So you didn't hear them. That's too bad. So that's it. No, with regard to the historic overlay, we need to, everybody needs to get comfortable with what, whether or not, I mean, your, the distinction you're making is that it's not connected. So therefore, it, it, it sort of modifies the goals of perhaps being complementary. Forget about, you know, secondary.
No, it's a different thing. The Department of the Interior has this guideline about when you attach a building to a historic structure, you can't mimic the historic structure.
So the, the, these are, these are important issues that have to be ironed out. And I have no degree of comfort that everybody's even remotely on the same wavelength here. So, but I think, I think we've surfaced that and.
Okay.
That's it.
And no.
So I, I thought a lot about this last night, and I know I was one who was very much for the reference to the limestone. What we saw in the plans was not what I guess I had really hoped for in doing. But I think I do want, and I actually, in looking at what we saw yesterday, prefer the previous plan, but I also would say I don't think that was ideal. I had a very strong reaction to both of these. And I think part of that, and I feel that all of us, including the HTC, whose expertise and time and efforts and opinions that they have on this, I deeply respect. This is an important crossroads in our town, and I just wanted to sort of get this out. This is, I mean, you see this building, you see it from the West Elm Greenwich Avenue intersection. You see it from the neighboring buildings. You see it from the field that's behind Town Hall. You can see it from the parking lot at Town Hall, from certain windows at Town Hall. So there's a lot of sites that you see, will see this building from. And I think about what, what is going in here? And is it something that we will like, you know, the 50, 100 years from, you know, how this will kind of make us feel? And I realize it's residential. It needs to look different. It's not a civic building. It's not a museum. It's none of those things. And so I don't, I don't have, this is sort of general thoughts I have. I don't necessarily have any guidance on sort of the architecture or the frosting or the icing or whatever. And then I really would like, you know, to, I think that's HTC's job, and I would very much look them to have, you know, a really good look at this and come up with something that I think will work for the town of Greenwich.
Okay. Thank you. Mary, Ms. Jenkins.
Yeah, I, again, I'm, I'm the, the newer, the newer render. It looked to me like, I know we're not supposed to copy. We're not supposed to pretend that the new building is part of the old building. But it looked like now to me, two buildings trying to satisfy two different, two different critiques, if you will, one with limestone, not even looking like the limestone buildings that it supposedly is supposed to be reflective of or complementary to. And then a brick building made out of bricks, but very harsh and strong, and also not particularly complementary, other than immaterial to the residential building. So it's kind of like, there has to be a sense that it is a building that has some reference back to the historical value. And whether that's limestone or not, it seems to me that the, the use of brick in an attempt to reflect the other residential areas is a nice idea. But then it looks like it's more part of the neighboring, neighboring residential than it is reflective of a historic building. And I, I think to the extent that we, we, I take HO very seriously, it's going to have to, people will go and say, oh, look, there's a building that I can see the relationship to something of historic value. So I, I, I agree with, with Commissioner Dawson that there, there is a point at where Commissioner Jones, excuse me, there's a point at which you have to understand how people will look at this building and figure out why it looks the way it does and agree with the way it looks, the way it does. And, and I'm sure HTC can, can give us some help on that. But right now, it's, it's like, now I think it detracts from, detracts from the residential part of the street. And it also doesn't reflect the historic part. So it's kind of like we're equally, equally dissatisfied, which it sometimes is an answer, but I don't think it is here.
Okay, so basically, I think everybody's saying, yes, that needs work. I think we've been saying that all along. Everybody that's commented said this needs work. So what I would suggest is that, oh, now I see Mr. Malillo's back. Okay, now, what I would suggest is we go to public comment, because we do have several people from HTC here. Would that be acceptable to you, Mr. Tessie?
Absolutely.
All righty. Who would like to speak on this application at 2:40? Well, I guess the first thing is, would be Mr. Cohen, because he's representing somebody, right? Because he's here as an attorney?
Yes.
All right, so. Mr. Cohen, if you're there. Yes, he's there and ready. Okay. Great. Oh, where are you? You're in a different setting.
Good evening. Hope you're feeling better.
Well, where are you? That's a beautiful color wall anyway. So, Mr. Cohen, if you would kindly go ahead, since you're not disclosing your location.
As you know, I represent the condominium association next door, who occupy the building at 40 West Elm Street. And for quite a long time, really years, Mr. Tessie's client and mine have been engaged in litigation relating to the development of this site, which after, as I say, years of dispute, have reached an agreement as to the, the building that Mr. Ferrari is proposing to build. And essentially, our agreement does not specify any particular architectural treatment. It specifies things like height, mass, density setbacks of the new building, all of which Mr. Ferrari's design, as he's now modified it, satisfied. And so we're prepared to support his application. I will tell you that, not with saying the fact that the agreement, as it's been reached, doesn't specify any particular architectural design to the exterior of the building. There was less than happy comments from our clients regarding the last version of the plan that was signed, was filed with a sort of bifurcated design. But be that as it may, we're hopeful that understanding can be reached that will satisfy HTC and hopefully yours, our settlement with Mr. Ferrari. Although it has been reached, it will not be finalized and concluded until the commission acts favorably toward the design that we've agreed upon. If the commission doesn't act favorably, then we, our settlement really is, is ended. So our goal is Mr. Ferrari's goal. But we also would like to see a design that is pleasing and in keeping with the residential elements of, of the neighborhood. And that's really all I have to say.
And, and your clients preferred your, your building that you're representing preferred the original design.
Yes.
And that was for what reasons?
It more in keeping with the residential elements of the neighborhood.
That just, I just wanted to make sure that I heard, heard that very thorough. So that the argument for that is to tie it, tie it to looking residential and keep residential quality. You know, the residential feel as you walk to those two buildings.
Correct.
Since the historic building is on the avenue and separated by some, by a modern commercial use that I'm not going to make any comment on, but okay, since I'm not an architect. Architect. Okay. All right. Okay, so you guys are, are fine with it. You preferred the first design. You would like to see it as a more residential application. And from what I had heard at one point, you preferred the more brick and less limestone and not the arched windows, right?
Yes.
All right, okay. And did, did the whole building vote on that or just specific? I mean, is it both buildings or?
The whole, the whole building voted on the settlement agreement as to the issues that I referred to, the height, density, mass, and that sort of thing. We did not take a poll of everyone regarding architectural design, but I did hear from members of the board.
Okay. All righty. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Cohen. Anything else?
That for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this application at 2:40 Greenwich Avenue? Anybody from HTC? So many of you are here. None of you wants to say anything? Okay, so since so many people from the HTC are listening, so this is going to go back to you as a new application, because we were obliged to close these two applications tonight. It would go back to you as a new application and hopefully, oh, we're not going to close it because you're going to withdraw it before that moment comes, right, Mr. Tessie?
We're, we are going to withdraw both applications.
Before the moment of closing it comes. Okay. All righty, so I'm not seeing HTC up for speaking. So I, I'm taking that as them not objecting to the concept that, that you've proposed of you're going to go back to them, you're going to work with them. And we're going to, and somehow or other, we would like to be together with them on it. Mr. Malillo has his hand up. Funny, when you babble long enough, somebody.
Exactly.
I'm sorry. I know, but I want to make this an inclusive process. I, I, I want to.
Well, you have. That's good. Now you've got.
Partnering with the, the HTC in this. Mr. Malillo, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. So I'll just be very brief. Obviously, I work for the commission. I can't speak for, for the HTC. But I'm, from the sentiment that was expressed by the commission members' last meeting, I think there's no objection to the withdrawal because they would like to see something different. And to get some, you know, some, some better designs in front of them and, and give, give feedback. So just wanted to clarify that. And I think the minutes, as detailed as they are, speak for themselves as to where it stands, where the HD stands. And so I don't think it would be bad for the withdrawal so they could get a fresh look when they come back.
Okay, so that works for everyone? All around, you're assuming that that's going to be okay. Anything else from the commission? No. Okay, so Mr. Tessie. We have heard from, we've heard from the public. You're going to withdraw?
We, we, we appreciated the guidance given to us by the HTC. Particularly, a little shout out to Mr. Dodd. I think he was very helpful and, and pointed our design team directions that personally, I believe, made a lot of sense. And rather than babbling about it, I'll leave it, leave it at that. May I withdraw verbally, Patrick? Or do you want me to send you an email or?
Patrick.
I think, I think the record is here, so we can, we could take it as the withdrawal.
Oh, really? You, you don't want it in blood?
Yeah, your oldest, your oldest child, please.
Your oldest child. I wouldn't take any of that.
No, we have carpet in the office now. We don't want blood.
Okay. All right, so let's see what you come back with, that it respects the wishes of the, of the residential neighbors. And you mentioned Mr. Dodd. I know that he has a background in historic preservation.
Yes.
And I know that the HTC has a whole lot of commitment and passion to doing something that's beautiful and elegant on the avenue. So hopefully it'll work.
No, I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm, I'm happy.
Okay.
That, that we're getting this opportunity. And just again, for the record, I withdraw all of the applications that we were just discussing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tessie.
I guess see you after your dinner break.
Yes, you will see us after.
Oh, I forgot about dinner.
Yeah, you got so cranky when you got more public. Nobody, nobody thought, nobody's going to believe you.
Not.
Not. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. What time?
37, 7:37.
All right, miss, well.
7:38, 7:38.
Do I hear 7:40? Do I hear?
Yeah, do 7:40.
Yard parking.
Okay, and then we'll do the next two.
Yep.
Okay. All righty, bye. All right, let me stop the recording. Somebody has to remember to turn it back on, okay?
Recording stopped.
Our next application is Greenwich Park LLC for a zoning text amendment to amend section 6106 to create a new subsection allowing payment in lieu of being required to include below-market units in multifamily developments. I would like to suggest, I think we heard them together the last time.
No, we didn't open the site plan last time.
Aha, so we're going to do the same thing now. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna just hear this one then, that, because that's the way we discussed it yesterday. And Ms. Jenkins will be recusing, ma'am.
Yeah, yes, that's correct, ma'am, sure.
So Ms. Jenkins, because of her position on the trust and because the trust would be the recipient of the fee in lieu under state law, will be recusing. And actually, she's co-chair of the trust. So, okay, Mr. Tessie. You're on.
So you're, you're not, just, just clarify, you're, we're only talking about these.
The text amendment.
The text amendment, not the site plan. Are, are you going to hear that this evening or?
Yeah. But.
You don't want to do them both at the same time?
I don't think so, because it's not how we talked about it the last time. So we've got separate comments for you on, they're various distinct sets of comments. So I would suggest we, let's do this one. And let's work this, and then we'll go do the site plan, if that's acceptable.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Tessie, since that caught you by surprise, you were listening to the briefing yesterday.
Correct.
At the time, we did not know, but what would be the outcome of the housing bill that's been proposed? That's been passed by the House, but the, it has been signed, from what I understand, into law. And the upshot of it is that. the state wants to see the numbers of units built and which have construction permits. There is not any points or credits given to P and Z approvals of units. And it is a bind for us because we've been approving a lot of multifamily units and they're not being built, for whatever reason, there's been a delay. So what we were talking about yesterday, what I suggested to the commission uh, during the briefing was that we would rather see something built than have the delay of a fee in lieu that would then have to be allocated and then would have to go to an application that would then be built, because that's going to be an additional timeframe delay. And what we're seeing is that things aren't moving forward, what we've seen is things aren't moving forward. So our question, my question to you about the zoning text amendment is if you and your client would be willing to consider doing it as an amendment to six one ten, that when someone does an office to residential conversion, that if they are granted an FAR bonus, that they include the um, a certain number of affordable units, however, below market rate units, however, since this would apply very narrowly to office to residential conversions, you could make the percent affordable different than what we currently have in six one ten for new build residential units. Since this is a conversion, if you would be willing to consider instead a text amendment to six one ten uh, in which you, any conversion to office from office has a resident, has a below market component and you get the zoning bonus associated. You get a zoning bonus with it, so if you need the zoning bonus, you have it, okay, I think I've said it like four times now, does that make sense?
I, I, I.
I know, I sound like you, don't tell me that.
No, I, I understand what you're saying.
That's what we'd like, that's the question that I raised yesterday, because the commission didn't seem, there were a lot of questions about the fee in lieu, so that was the, the first thing that I wanted to ask you, is whether you would be willing to do that.
Well, the fee in lieu, uh, as presented to the commission was always in, in, in the, in the proposal, we actually had an original proposal, by the way, uh, that was was a modification to section six one ten G, and I would say G, six one ten. And the commission advised me that you didn't want to see it, see, see the conversion provisions in six one ten, but rather an independent, anyway, that's history. Uh, so far as the, the fee in lieu is concerned, that was always going to be discretionary on the part of the commission.
It can't be under state law, you know that, we've, we went over this ground with you, it can't be on, it's not discretionary, the fee in lieu has to go to the trust.
No, I'm not talking about going to the trust, that's a given, I told Patrick that was not an issue. It was discretionary of the commission whether or not to allow the fee in lieu, is what I was saying. You made the decision.
Yeah, but.
So your decision now is don't bother because we don't want it.
Well, we'd like you to, we'd like you to add affordable to this building, below market.
I, I understand, I spoke to Mr. Ferrari, it's not his.
And? And what did he say?
I'm, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, I was, we cut each other off, so all's fair.
Cancelled out.
We cancelled out. What, what did Mr. Ferrari say?
He prefers the payment in lieu and was willing to up the ante, but he wants to get started with this building, it's been empty a long time. Um, and so, you know, sometimes discretion's the better part of valor here. Uh, but then again, we get down to the, to the numbers, what we talked about today, anticipation of the meeting here was to come in and state that. I mean, at the end of the day, we would provide three affordable units, and where do we get the three from? Basically, from ten percent, just from ten percent, basically, it's ten percent rounded up, but ten percent of the units in the garage building, in the garage portion of the building and the new addition. We, the argument being, underlying premise being that the rest of the building could have been built as of right. So that's what we talked about, that's what we talked about today, proposing to the commission.
Oh, oh, by the way, the as of right is not going to be mandate, it's not going to be mandatory, from what we understand, the Senate version, the whole thing about office conversion being as of right, mandatory is now a may, we may do that, it's not a we shall do that, from what I've been advised today, so don't assume you get as of right.
No, 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 what I meant by as of right, I apologize, is that we could build a new building and under, uh, the, not build a new building, we could retrofit the existing office space.
Mm-hmm.
And not need any quote incentives under six one ten, so there, there would be no obligation to provide affordable units under the six one ten regulations as they stand today. That's what I was trying to say. So that would have let, with that, we're, we're saying.
In other words, you could keep the existing footprint. What you're saying is you could come out at the existing footprint. Come out at the existing, well, hmm.
No, I was just saying that, similar to what happened when we converted all those units at uh, at, at the mill, we didn't need any incentives and therefore there was no affordable component, we went through that at that time.
Right.
Um, so that's all we're saying, that's a similar situation.
Except that we're not totally comfortable, you see, you're, you're arguing that you're not using more FAR, but then if, for example, you had a site plan in which you converted a whole bunch of garage, open garage to enclosed apartments, we would consider that in addition to the FAR.
I agree a hundred percent, that's what I'm trying to say, in my way. So I'm saying, you take the additional FAR, we're seeking by converting uh, the, the lower level, some of the lower level garage area, because we don't need it, and that conversion in, in and of itself would trigger, we agree, a requirement to provide affordable units.
Right.
To the additional, uh, call it additional space being proposed that you went over yesterday, uh, I, I watched, and that also would trigger an affordable uh, unit component.
Yep.
Whether it's affordable or, or middle, or uh, middle income, whatever it's going to be, or moderate income.
Okay.
Below market units, we're saying, we agree, we, we'll, we can accept that concept. The building total units is forty-six, so we're saying twenty-six of the units uh, would be uh, built with the three affordable units making up to ten percent. Again, I say affordable, could be moderate, below market units uh, incorporated into the, into the program. That was from an economic standpoint, um, kind of like as far as Mr. Ferrari thought he could go to justify the cost of the conversion. Um, but that plays into what you were saying earlier, the extra FAR uh, triggers the requirement to incorporate affordable units, and we do have a building here that he's anxious to get going on, so you would have your uh, um, lack of a better word, wish granted, uh, to be able to get a, get some units under building permits as quickly as possible.
You got it, um, because we're extremely frustrated, I don't know if you read, uh, we're extremely frustrated right now that we've approved over a thousand housing units in the last, Patrick, is it two years, two and a half years, something like that? And a huge number of them aren't going forward, um, because of economic factors that have to do with building materials and stuff like that. So, so, or whatever reasons, so when we talked initially about this, I had completely forgotten, honestly, I had completely forgotten we ever talked to, to you about this being an amendment under six one ten, it was a different scenario, it was also, um, we have, we have a clear message from the legislature at the moment that they would like us to, to do, be doing conversions. From the messiness that I understand in Hartford, they are now making, they've voted on language that that is optional to us if we don't want to do it.
Yeah.
As, no, yeah, hard to tell, because there's a different bill now, there's a second bill that does the conversions, and I haven't read the final language on it, it was voted today, so, but they would like to see us do them. And so my question then is, okay, so um, different signals from outside, so how about, would Mr. Ferrari be willing to do ten percent? In other words, would he, would he go to one, one more unit? Did I do the numbers right? In other words, we'd love to see more from him.
Well, he, he threatened to, to listen.
Is he here? No, he's not.
Whether he's on or not, I don't know.
No, he's not on.
Yeah, I, I, I thought we would be on before seven o'clock, but I was wrong again. Yeah, I know he had a commitment this evening. Um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's about the end of the day, it's about the money, I, I know money is not supposed to be a zoning thing, but it always is an affordable unit.
Right, of course. We have to pretend it's not.
I can tell you that he's, he's working on getting his building permit, if he doesn't have it already, for five eighty-one um, West Bunham Avenue, uh, that's that project you approved a couple of years ago, that did get delayed for the reasons you, you articulated.
And that's not even in the count of a thousand units, from what I remember.
Oh, it could be over two, you said two, Jesus, could be over, it could be pre-COVID.
That's not even, that's not even in our count.
Well, they're coming in, and, and so I think we have six or seven of them here.
Patrick, I'm, I'm in like.
Mr. Tessie, Yolanda's on the line, would she be with Mr.?
Oh, Yolanda.
Oh, she would be with Mr.
Ferrari, okay.
She's his assistant.
I, you know, and I didn't even register, oh, Yolanda, oh, she may not be there. All right.
She may have been monitoring it to advise him.
All right, I'm going to let her talk, because I tried promoting her, Yolanda?
Could be John.
Well, either John Ferrari or Yolanda, would you please unmute, um, because you have your hand up? Mm-mm. Okay, um, we'll just keep talking, then, they're enabled to talk and when they're ready, oh.
Yeah, he said he's, he's listening, but he's having trouble getting on.
Okay.
He sent me a text.
Okay. So there it is, uh, and um, that would be, we're being encouraged to do these things, it would be may rather than shall, but the idea of having an existing building, our, you know, I said this to you the first time we discussed it, we asked John Ferrari when we were doing the Affordable Housing Tax Force in 2020 if he would consider this, and at the time, he didn't want to, so it's something we've wanted to see, this conversion.
Well, what he said is that a pure, I know, we had that discussion, I think we were talking about pure conversion and not what it would take, you know, in terms of.
To do it, and he said it would take.
Additions to it and supplements to, to balance out the economics.
So I can't poll the commission, so I think I should let everybody talk and make their comments at this point, um, so you know where everybody is, well, and then hopefully Mr. Ferrari will be able to connect.
He's listening, he said, but he.
Okay, Mr. Low?
Oh, no, I, I love the fact that he's threatening to listen, and now he is listening, that's great. Um, we, we need more affordable units, no, no secret there, right? And, and we were, I think as a commission, although I'm not entitled to speak for the commission, obviously, we're happy to rely upon some sort of kindness um, from, uh, not from strangers, but from our friendly developers. And, and here's an opportunity for um, your client to respond and, and, and be both a hero and a, a good businessman. And there's some fuzzy, um, there's some fuzzy regulations or um, having to do with converting the, this garage space and everything, and, and maybe we can get to a compromise here on that. And, and I recognize, uh, Mr. Tessie, that you, what I'm describing is fuzzy, you describe as wrong or, uh, you know, hardened uh, fact, but um, how, how we calculate the FAR is material here. So um, I, anyway, I, it would be great i- if we could have a meeting of the minds and from my limited involvement with this commission, uh, Mr. Ferrari, he's been, uh, Ferrari's been uh, very accommodating and um, and a good listener.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hello, hello, Yolanda, how are you?
I, yeah. I have to brush up on my Spanish, but.
Yeah, I know, and, and not only that, you're deeply Colombian Spanish.
Yeah, that's right. I, uh, thank you, Madam Chair and, and the members of the board, and I apologize, I'm, I'm kind of a knee out in full when it comes to technology, but um, but we're on now, so.
Okay, so, oh, look, and you got renamed by Patrick, okay, so um, your thoughts? You can swing doing affordable, doing some, doing below markets, and John would then draft up something that would work for any office conversion in town that if they were using more, uh, if they were using zoning bonus, that they would get a zoning bonus in exchange for affordable units like six one ten does, but you would use different numbers, they would work for this, you know, in general, for being able to add to the structure be, to an existing structure, because you know that an existing structure is going to usually take an addition.
Madam Chair, would, would there be a payment in lieu?
No.
No.
The way I'm, the way we were thinking about it yesterday, the way we, we raised it with the commission yesterday was that, I, I, I don't know if you were listening for this part, but.
I wasn't.
John, Mr. Ferrari, we've approved in like the last two years, over a thousand multifamily units, and for a variety of reasons, they are not going ahead. So if we were to take the fee in lieu, when we saw where the state was heading with how it's legislating, it isn't looking for us to approve units, it is looking for us to issue building permits. And so we can approve all we want, what we're seeing is we've got to make sure that we're approving projects that are going to go forward, and this feels like it's going to go forward and we would have some affordable housing units sooner if you could do more that was below market.
I understand, and you know, the reason why a lot of projects aren't going ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Because of.
You have a lot of technology for someone who's not good at it.
Is because of construction costs and interest rates, and um, you know, it's very hard to make these deals work.
Yeah, you read, I, I, I had talked to enough people in, in the business that, so is in an op-ed that on this new bill that we, we said, look, it is not about approvals, it is about what is happening with tariffs, with interest rates and with construction materials.
Correct, correct.
Um, but you would have to go tell the state that? And you're from the wrong, yep, I won't say that. Okay, so um, so you're, you're favorably inclined, you and John have talked about it, you're favorably inclined?
I can do something, yes, um, you know, I have to go back and make, see if the numbers will work, um, the way we had figured it previously, we were talking about a payment in lieu, but um, but I understand your predicament, I mean, um, I mean, hopefully if there was a payment in lieu, um, you know, more units could be created, but that doesn't help you immediately, I understand the problem.
And the other thing is um, that even if we handed it to the housing authority the next day, they aren't, they don't have a project to, that they're working on that isn't financed already, because they've got the financing for Vinci, they've got the financing for that, for Armstrong Court, and they haven't started working on Corinna yet.
I understand the problem.
So you know, that's the thing, um, and the trust has been carefully. Um, and the trust has been carefully doling out money and here we are with a bunch of stuff that's not going to go forward. And that was the brilliant idea that we had with the last Affordable Housing Task Force, so.
If I can, uh. Throw a little, uh, another concept, which has been historically rejected, but given, given the kind of like.
Given that we're trying to be flexible, yeah.
Is that. You, um. That. You look at the concept of. The developer and actually sometimes I think it's Stanford including are, are doing this now. They kind of want the developer to go find a project for, for that payment in lieu. And get, so that it gets built and doesn't go into cyberspace or, or into a, you know, trust fund. And, and then to another party and it just never gets done. Uh, we were talking about that concept. Back when, uh, when we had, we had the larger scale of way back at two forty. And, uh, you know, that never, that never is. Get your arms around.
No, but there was a reason for that and we did correctly on that. At the time. You were going to separate the affordable from the market entirely. The alternate project would be better off with a mix. It is just the optics of not having an inclusive. Development of a development that separates the lower income people from the, from the higher income people. Is not one that. Plays is, it just is inconsistent with so much of what the state is trying to do.
And actually, just in, in, yeah, in that particular case, there are actually still going to be more moderate, we're still going to be more. Market units in that particular building than there were going to be affordable units.
Right.
So it wasn't just isolating, you know, buy two family house and make it, make it.
Right. That's, but that's what we're looking for. That's what we're looking for because remember we also pushed back on, on another one. That I can't name by name, but because they were separating the lower income people from the, the market and that's. That's exclusionary.
I, no, I'm, I think we're all aware of what you're talking about.
Okay, so.
Where are you talking about?
Okay, so, um, so there it is, um.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as we're coming up, trying to be flexible and come up with ideas.
Yes, sir.
I, I have an idea I'd like to throw out. What about if, um, we agreed upon a number of affordable units and they were done at a different location? For example, I have a building at Deerfield that has about 10 units, um. Um, and I have the potential to.
Convert them.
Convert them or actually build, um, possibly build more units because I have. Commercial tenants in there, if you know the building, Peacock is in there. And they may, may be moving out and I could create more units or there's garages there. And there's market, you know, units in that building, so it's not separating.
Right.
It's something that could be done.
Yep.
Um, and almost immediately, uh, uh, to contribute to the amount of affordable units. And I know it's, it's.
Yeah, a- as long as you're not, in my mind, and commission, please feel free to interrupt and jump in, but as long as you're not separating. And saying, oh, well, so the rich people are here.
No, that, that was exactly John.
Yeah, and that, that's one thing. And the second thing is. I don't know, that's not a text amendment anymore. I don't know how you do that. Patrick's really, Patrick and Tracy are really good at this too. I don't know how you say, so we're not doing. Affordables below market in this place, but there's going to be another project later on that will have market rates. So how do you do that?
Are, aren't you in essence combining the two at, at some level?
Then you have to do what, maybe two site plans at the same day? Patrick's thoughts? Let Patrick talk because he's good.
Yeah, well, I, Mr. Tessie sort of already teed that up. I- it would be the, the, the. Most direct way would be collecting fee and lieu and then RFPing or directing money into a particular project elsewhere. So it may be the same owner on both sides, but what you're essentially doing is you're extracting money for lack of building units here. Exchange for not building units here to direct it towards a project elsewhere, right? To increase the number of affordables or what have you. Um, somewhere else. So that, that, that is probably the most direct way to do it, but it, again, it, it puts. The town in a, in a position of trying to solicit, you know, people to develop, right? And that's. Um, like we've been talking about today, that, that apparently that is not good enough. That we're, um, you know, we're building affordability or we're taking money for affordable units if we're not actually. Um, you know, swinging hammers or whatever they want to call it.
As, as I said earlier, Patrick, I, I think it's, I know Stan, I, I think, I, I know it's Stanford has a program like that. Now where that's the, the title of collecting money, not seeing units built. So they're requiring developers to actually identify.
Right.
Locations and have the money put right in, that if you don't have something ready to go, I don't know if it's shovel ready. But ready to go, uh, you, you're not going to, uh, it's not going to work payment in lieu. You're going to have to put them in your project unless.
That's the, that's the bind.
I'm not sure. Essentially, it's essentially two projects. It's not, it's not, uh, one concept and with an exchange of. You know, collectively we're counting units or whatever. We have, you know, project A and then project B with the money from the, from the payment, right?
Um, I, I don't know about this idea, but, um. Hopefully there's a lot of people, a lot of people out there smarter than me can figure this out, but what if, what if there was a payment in lieu? Went to the trust and the trust bought. Units that would immediately be affordable. Does that make sense? I, I don't know.
Again. You've segregated out because where's the trust is going to buy some units somewhere? I think you're making it complicated, honestly. And, um, like you just said, I'm not smart enough to figure out this answer. To me, the cleanest thing would be if you could get your mind to having below market. In the office park. And if you could squeeze out a little more, that would be great because I do kind of know that. Pro- I'm guessing you may not have given us your very best number yet. But I think it ma- it becomes complicated. The trust then has to go buy and, oh, and the trust isn't allowed to buy units, right? I just remembered, I think the ordinance.
No, they're not, you're not supposed to be owning property.
Buying units, but buying the.
They can't, yeah, they can't buy anything.
Buying the, not only the unit, but buying the, the, um. John helped me with this, a right to, you know.
Yeah, Tessie helped me write the ordinance, so he's, he's going to remember, hopefully.
What happens is the, uh. Well, if you look at the, if you look at the, uh, Greenwich communities. They receive money for a project, you know, the project is substantially all. The project is. You know, go- going to basically have occupants who all, whose rents are controlled to the. You know, limited to the point where it's affordable housing project. So there, there's no, there's no mix. The, the housing trust, the, the Greenwich communities buys buildings all the time in, in, uh. In communities and the residents are, are those that, you know, qualify, uh, in terms of their income.
John, maybe you're buying the, um. The restriction, um, to, um, the deed restriction to keep it affordable. Does that make sense? You're not actually buying the.
They can't buy anything. The trust can only make loans.
But I think. Can only make loans?
Yeah. So that's, and John wrote that, so you, you know, it, I know it was 2022, so, or whenever, 2020, yeah, 2022 when we did it, so. That's three years ago, so we're, I'm, um, but yeah, the trust can only make loans. So, um. That, it's, and it's really just a question, I think the si- to find the simplest answer and the. Answer that gets us moving forward. The fastest. So, um, okay, so do we leave you guys with food for thought and can we get them back on our next meeting? I know you don't want me to say that tonight. You said yes.
Oh, no, I, I, I understand perfectly, um, but that, you know, that may, if the trust could. Could help the transaction as far as buying the deed restriction, okay? And, you know, not necessarily buying the, the property, but buying a deed restriction. That may help in a lot of ways. If the trust gets more money, it can immediately buy units. To. Not, no, abide a deed restriction, I'm sorry.
Can't buy anything like that. It can only make loans.
Really?
Yeah.
Can that be modified though? I mean, can that be changed?
Oh, you want to go to the RTM? It was, I mean, you know, they spent a whole summer changing the art, the language that, that we had drafted with. How many lawyers did we have on that committee?
Battle Royal.
We had Bill Finger, we had John Tessie, we had Tom Hegney. Yeah, John was on it. Yeah, but the drafting group was smaller. We had a lot of lawyers working on that, but, you know, the RTM rewrote it. Um, Aron, you have your hand back up and you're good at finance, so maybe you have.
No, I was going to address something else if that'd be all right.
I think we leave you thinking about it and we get you on that. You nodded, right, Patrick? Next meeting's okay?
No, he, he's.
Did the lurch noise?
I, I would, I mean, I, I, if there's interest in this, and I, again, if Mr. Tessie and, and Mr. Ferrari are, are, are ready to, to. Dive in, I'm, we'll, we'll try to make an effort to put it on the next meeting, but we are, we have a lot of other stuff that's in the, in the till here.
Yeah, that one's full, full.
A plethora, not a dearth, by the way.
Yeah, plethora, big plethora.
Yeah, I mean, well, problem with time is it goes by very quickly.
I know.
Thank you, Yogi.
It also never stops, right?
But I do think, Pat, maybe what we can do, because John, you know, John brought up the Deerfield building. That, you know, which had, if, if you probably all could recall, it did, it did have affordable or, or. Affordable units in it and the time expired. So you're now market now. But those units, John had a concept of adding two more units there. Um, he had three.
But they would not, that, so then, but all the units are then affordable.
No, he has total of 10 units.
No, no.
Okay, all right.
10 or 12, that's what we were saying.
It's currently a 10-unit pride, building, um, we could perhaps put, um. Another three or four, um, again, I'd have to look at it closely, units and, um. You know, a certain amount would be affordable and then the rest would be all market. So it wouldn't be, you know. Um, just all affordable units.
It'll be at least, um, at least equal to the majority of, of market units. And that's about as shovel ready as you can get because they're already built. And it satisfies your goals. It happens to be an ideal situation. Now, it's one size fit all. You know, no, this just happens to be, uh, one of those situations where something can be identified. And, um, you, you're going to get a jump start on the, uh. On being able to count the units.
It'll be immediate and.
My personal preference. Is that it go in, in, in Office Park. I don't know what other people think, but I lean to. Us showing that we're, us moving towards integration as we do things, that we are doing inclusion as we do things.
I think you are, um, and I think there's a very creative way of doing it.
Same building. I don't know, commissioners, Aron has his hand up. Let other people talk because I've been doing a lot of talking.
I just want to address something else, you know, assuming you're coming back, just a suggestion, uh, from Mr. Tessie. It'd be wonderful if we could simplify this amendment and I see no reason why. Uh, you know, let's not fool around with FAR, let's not have that exclusion. Just give us the FAR that you think. Is going to work for you, the FAR ratio.
Yep, exactly.
It's going to work for you. So we don't, we don't have, you know, it feels very much like spot zoning. And secondly, instead of, you know, this very complicated way of figuring out, gee, how many affordable units? Just have it on the total. You have 46 units. If you want to give us three, you want to give us four, just do the, just do the simple math because. Uh, I mean, I read this five or six times before I finally figured it out. And when I presented it yesterday, I had it wrong. So, uh, like to keep things simple.
Um, yes, that's the old kiss.
That's right.
That's how complicated I am.
Mr. Lo?
Yeah, no, I just.
You're done, right, Aron?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
When you separate out. To a different location, I mean, it, it just smacks of the red flag of segregation, which flies in the face of. Of all that Hartford frankly is all about. And I, I just, it, it doesn't, it will never, I don't think it passes the, the smell test.
It's very hard to, to make affordable units in, in a condo project.
I know, we know that, we know.
Yeah, no, I got it. I got it. I'm just saying from a practical matter. Go ahead, sorry.
Weird question, since you said that. We, we've asked another time. Since you're a landlord anyway, can't some of your units in a building be rentals and others be condo or is that just like a developers?
Yes, it can.
Okay, so you don't have to do condo for the below markets?
When it does, your issues like, like, um. You know, common area fees, okay? Um, you know, common area fees will be a lot higher in the condo unit now. And my understanding is with affordable units, you can't, you know, um, you know, make the tenant pay those fees, you know, so. It, it becomes a problem, you know? But, but let, let's, let me, let's go back. Let, let me, uh, let's explore this. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to hear that, you know, you're flexible and, and, um, and, and, and I certainly. Will be. And let, let me go back and come up with some ideas, um. You know, I, I think there is a solution here, um.
I do too.
And I, I, I love the fact that the units could be immediate, you know, and, um. Um, and, um, but let, let, you know, I, I just want to thank you very much and, and. But let me go back and let me try to figure this out, um, and, and come up with some ideas.
To give you some context, it took a long time, I think, for Greenwich to really. This commission, I think, five or six years ago, we really began to try very hard to advance affordability. And you know we did, and that's where the direction, and we've really been working on that. But, and, and we want to do it in the right way and we wanted to do it in a way that's straightforward.
Right, now, but the economics have to work on the other side.
I got, I got that.
You know, so that, that's why.
I'm going, I'm going to send you, yes, yes, I, I totally get that you're not going to. Because we've got all these permits outstanding. I mean, we've got zoning permits outstanding, you know, we've approved, well, not the zoning permit, right, but P and Z approvals. For projects that for one reason or another, because of the economics. And I talked to one guy who said, you know, he was quoting me all the prices of different things and he said, it's just crazy what happened. Because nothing has dropped since COVID and the interest rates went up.
Yeah.
And now you don't know what the tariffs are going to do.
Yes.
What, yeah. So got that, but on the other hand, it's your hometown.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Mr. LaRoe, sorry, sorry, Mr. Ferrari, Mr. Patrick wants to add something.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, you know, I want to go over because we're talking about what the trust can and can't do. I, I just want to point out that the trust can. Provide, you know, in, in the, um, they can lend money for the creation of affordable units. And that would include acquisition of sites, existing structures, designating more affordable units. And then also in the rehab, rehabilitation, renovation, alteration. So there is language in there that would allow. The trust, if they wanted to, to create more units, so to speak, even in an existing building. So it's not, it's not always.
But they can't purchase them.
They can't, right, it's, but it's not purchasing. And then everyone who has said that is absolutely right, but if there is.
They would give it to the landlord. Well, that's the thing. You're on the trust board, so you can go back and talk to Mr. Finger.
Yeah, well, I think in another way, it would be if, if somebody had a market rate building now. And desired money to do renovations to that building and in lieu they would provide affordable units. I think that is a plausible start. That's what, that's sort of the example I wanted to, you know, I know it's not this conversation, but that's.
No, that's not, and that's not off at all. I think you're hitting something there. And maybe the thing to do is to go and talk to the trust.
Right.
Um, and see what they'll do. And Mr. Ferrari, you should go and, and it's. Um, and see what they'll do. And Mr. Ferrari, you should go and and it's, it's helpful if you can go with John, with Mr. Tessie, with the other one, because Bill Finger, the co-chair of the trust, is a developer. So he sees things the way you see them, and it's an easier, you remember him from the Affordable Housing Task Force, so it's an easier conversation to have, because he's gonna understand what you're raising.
Okay.
I mean, not yet, just the one more point, not to get too depressing on this, but obviously, the more money the trust has, the more creative and more opportunistic they can get with doling out the funds in the, in the pursuit of affordable units, right, which, you know, um, we don't have right now. So that's, you know, that's the, uh, that's just a fact, right?
But so that's back to the payment in lieu concept.
Yeah, I know, I was kinda groaning when he said that, but okay.
Well, I I think, I think aim in lieu is, obviously, it's a tool that we're, that communities are allowed to use. I'm not gonna or talk, you know, dissuade anybody from saying it's not, it's, it, you know, it, all in all, the 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 trust needs money, funds to produce these units. And so we have to think of ways of either getting them through, you know, development approvals or through other means and and I'll I'll just say, leave it at that.
And uh, um, I think a lot of the problem we were having with the fee and lieu, honestly, was all this, the the FAR stuff. I mean, how the FAR was being calculated and it was only on these and not, I mean, what Aron said, that he read it five times and Aron has got a financial background, I mean.
Well, what happened, just, just not to spend a hell of a lot of time on it, but.
We didn't have any plans tonight, anyway.
We, well, let me make this point.
But by the way, I'd just like to interrupt. John Tessie, most attorneys get paid by the hour, he gets paid by the words, so that's why he talks so much.
And no wonder that you're having trouble making the economics work.
Yeah, it takes me a long time.
And and now one of these, these attorneys complain about not having enough time to explain their case.
Oh, Mr. Ferrari, if you're here to rib Mr. Tessie, just, you're welcome to join any P and Z meeting you want. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Tessie, we're gonna let you talk.
No, the the reason, because you spent time on it, John. When we looked at the bill that was pending regarding the convert, one of the bills that was pending regarding conversion that we thought was gonna get passed, it stated that you'd have the as of right to convert the building. Not, not, not just the office space, but it does whole structure to potential use.
It, you know.
Now, that blew up when it didn't make it, didn't make it to this bill.
But the other thing that was, well, hmm, stay tuned. But the other thing is the the garage, the counting of the garage space just really.
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, we would've been able to convert it as of right under that bill, because it didn't say office space, it said the building itself, the structure. But let's do this, we, I, we, we got the message.
And it's not, I don't think, am I right in saying, you guys, that it's not like we can't do we're totally opposed to fee and lieu, that we're actually more interested in something that directly makes units, no matter how that is.
Yeah, that's the whole point.
No, I'm asking the commission. I know you always answer for them, John, but Mr. Tessie. Can you fix that, Mr. Ferrari?
There he goes again.
I'm taking back words, John, so you're gonna get a discount.
Commissioners. Any comments?
Well, we're in agreement with what's been said.
Okay, alright.
I I'd like to thank, um, your Madam Chair and and the board, um, you know, for thinking outside the box and, um, and, you know, all the yeah, I I I'm committed to getting more affordable units out there too. And I I think, um, um, you know, some developers, you know, that are, you know, Pacora Brothers, I I think they should, you know, get an award for what they're doing, you know? I mean, they're really accomplishing it, you know?
That's the problem is they're not going ahead with some of their approvals now.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, and it's not for, through no fault of their own.
Yeah, but thank you very much.
Well, you know what, you know, that's interesting.
There he goes again.
No, no.
No, 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 let me make the point.
No, when Mr. Ferrari said, thank you very much.
No, but listen to me. No, ser- seriously, that's a good example. Joe needs money to build that, to make the project make sense.
He has, the trust has given him money and it brought the units from being at SMI to AMI. Okay, that's what the.
They did, yeah.
Okay. But the trust can't give him any more money, it's true. But he's already committed to a certain number of, of, I mean, he hasn't come in and asked for a revision. Instead, he's submitted a completely different plan.
Well, technically, he's sold the property, but that's.
He sold, he sold one property, the one at two thirty-seven Pemberwick, and one seventy-one now has.
No, 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 one seventy-one is sold. I don't, two thirty-seven, I don't know.
Oh, it's, I thought it sold to Eagle Hill.
It was, that was, that was reported in the paper that it transferred.
In the paper, it transferred.
Oh, I I I did not see the transfer, I'm sorry. I I just, I've been waiting for that to show up, but I.
That's the problem, is that they've gone away. Now, there's one that we think is gonna come back. That was a different problem. It had an infrastructure issue.
The point I was trying to make is
Yes.
when the money comes in, in a fee and loose situation, it should be able to go out to a developer
Agreed.
as a grant and not a loan. Because that's all about the affordability of making, of these projects. And if it goes out and there are conduit of money that comes in from one developer, that money should go with, that economics should be such that it's given to that developer to help subsidize the construction.
Okay, great, it's a very good point. Okay, thank you. Well, thanks, both of you, um.
Thank you.
You'll be talking, thank you both.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, we're not gonna open the site plan, right?
That's what you said to me earlier.
No, I didn't say we weren't gonna open it at all. I said we were gonna talk about just the text amendment first. Do you wanna open the site plan or do you wanna wait?
Well, where do we stand on time?
And then when, it's not a must open until this nineteenth of.
Yeah, we have nineteenth to open it, and then we'd have thirty-five more days to close, so.
And the only real concern that, well, I can't talk about it, but you know, um, the commission mentioned, just in general, that easy to understand FAR numbers that they can connect to is very important.
Alright, so then it'd have to open at the next meeting.
Well, or the first meeting in July, and then we'd have.
Meeting in July.
We'd have both meetings in July.
Make the first meeting in July, alright, I think.
So.
Okay.
Okay, talk to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, both.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Bye, Yolanda. I like her a lot. Alright, okay, so, um, now we go.
Silly go. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we got the, sorry, I I didn't scroll. Next page.
Wait, so the space cadet tonight is supposed to be.
Uh, well, I think I'm playing the role, so.
Sorry, um. Text amendment. Our next application is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Department. Um, app, uh, for a zoning text amended to amend, amend section six fourteen, uh, which is the energy efficiency narrative. And I'm not sure who's talking about that, but whoever wishes to, please go ahead.
I can or Pat, I don't know.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna leave it to Deputy, uh, well, no, not Deputy. Keep forgetting that Bianca wrote this one, I'm sorry.
The, the certified senior.
Aron, you wanna go ahead? I I don't.
Sure.
No, no, uh, no hubris here, so.
Uh, I wrote this, so maybe I will. Uh, so, and and we talked about it yesterday, but we've had the energy efficiency narrative reg in effect for three years. Uh, results have been encouraging in terms of the number of applicants that are doing energy modeling, targeting above code, uh, energy efficiency targets, uh, renewables. All electric is kind of flat, and then a big jump in EV charging stations, which is subject to a different regulation. Uh, but the three years have given us experience that there's some pretty big exceptions to this narrative, which has caused, uh, let's say intense frustration at times on Emax part, not my part. Uh, and those include that athletic facilities greater than twelve hundred feet are exempted. So that would mean, uh, you know, the hockey rink, we didn't need to get an energy or didn't require an energy narrative on that, that's coming back. Or Country Days, uh, basketball court. Also, uh, construction within historic overlay zone, and that would mean, you know, we have a current project in front of us that would not be required to give an energy narrative, although it's a pretty big building. And then another one is a change of use from residential to non-residential. So, uh, this amendment would eliminate those exceptions. The one remaining exception would be any building less than three thousand square feet would not need to acquire an energy narrative. And then another addition, which was, uh, recommended by Emac was to say that any building, uh, hu- ten thousand square feet or larger would need to do energy modeling, uh, ideally in terms of, uh, energy use intensity, EUI. And that would allow Emac and us to compare, you know, projects, no matter what they are, uh, across the board, so that would be very helpful. And then, uh, uh, took, you know, Nick Macri's suggestion that, you know, if there's a small addition to, uh, a building that did not require, uh, new, uh, uh, energy mechanicals, so maybe you put on dormers or a new porch and you're putting ducks in, but you're not changing the furnace or anything else. Then, uh, and even if that addition put it over ten thousand square feet, you would not have to, uh, do the energy modeling. So in sum, that is the amendment, and I, uh, move that, uh, this amendment. Do I have a second to approve the adoption of this amendment? Or any, are there any questions? Sorry. Don't see anything. Margarita's mute.
Okay, I know, we normally do that after the public comment, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay, so, um, first we, first, does anybody on the commission have any questions in regard to this amendment or comments? Alright, um, does anybody from the public wish to speak in regard to this amendment? This is the energy management, um, the energy, uh, narrative that accompanies P and Z applications. I see nobody from the public. Okay, now we go back to, uh, normally we do this after we close the public hearing, but we're close enough right now. Um, we do have a motion that has been made, um, by Mr. Wells. Does that motion have a second? And seated on it would be the regular members. Okay, I will second the motion. Um, I will now take a vote. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Alrighty, Mr. Low? Mr. Low? Did he fall asleep?
And I, I don't know, he but he muted himself. Why don't we go out of order?
Okay, Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Right, Mr. Wells?
Aye.
And let me see if I can get Mr. Low. Um, because maybe there's something wrong with his technology. Can I? Hmm, no, no, not him. Okay, here he is.
Might ask him if he heard the presentation. And if not, maybe an alternate vote.
Mm-hmm, I think that's what we're gonna have to do, because he's not picking up.
Yeah, why don't we, uh, why don't we put a pin in the motion and then we'll, we'll come back to it at the end.
Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we're missing someone from being seated.
Let's get it done now.
Yeah, so Madam Jenkins, so Low's not seated anyway, because he missed the discussion, obviously. Um, Madam Jenkins is the first seated alternate this evening. Madam Jenkins, we are now seating you. Um, does anybody remember this? I've never done before. Is after a motion has been made, we do the seating, we change the seating?
I can remake the motion if you want.
No, I'm, I'm just asking Robert's rules.
I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to dive into it to figure out what the.
Um, why don't we just make the motion over again, and the seated, the people seated are McRae, Yesky, Jenkins, Wells, and Albin.
Uh.
Um, Low, we tried to call you, because we were voting.
I, I'm sorry, I had to take a break, sorry.
Okay, alright, so we unseated you on that text amendment, and Mary's gonna seat for you. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Wells.
Uh, I move, uh, the approval of the proposed amendment to the energy efficiency narrative.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Jenkins has seconded this time. Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Madam Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Abstain.
And Albin is, is an I. Um, and that is a four-one vote in favor of the motion.
Four oh one?
Or is it oh one, but yeah, right.
Four oh, four oh one. Said it wrong. Thank you very much for that. Okay, so we can move on. Are you okay? I did not give you my cold.
Alright.
Through the internet, you, are you alright, Mr. Low?
I'm fine.
Okay, alright, our next item is number eleven, the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Department for a zoning text amendment to amend section six five A, definition six thirteen, site plan approval, and six ninety-three permitted uses, and this is, um, to permit the conversion of an existing vacant nursing home into multifamily housing, subject to some summary review as defined in the Connecticut General statutes in eight dash two R. Um, this one, I believe, Patrick is going to present, although there's not much.
Yeah, I mean, you, you've said about ninety percent of what the amendment is in, in your reading of the, the act here, so again, it is, uh, the state in two thousand, uh, to twenty twenty-three, adopted twenty twenty-four, uh, wa- approved, uh, conversions of existing but vacant, um, nursing home facilities throughout the state. Uh, our regulations have just, there, it's particular to us that we require a special permit, and it's allowed in residential zones, uh, to void, to avoid any conf- uh, confusion uh, with the state law, uh, we're just correcting the regulation to reflect it and place it in the, uh, proper order, which is a summary review, or I I believe that is a site plan application. Uh, so again, as we talked about, we're mending the definition and, um, there is, there currently is no definition of a nursing home, so we, we're establishing that. Or intending to establish that. Uh, we're amending six thirteen to acknowledge that conversion of existing and vacant nursing homes may be converted to multifamily housing. And then, uh, in six ninety-three, where, um, residential, the residential zones of the town where nursing homes are permitted by special permit, we're just pointing out that conversion to multifamily for those established uses are permitted by state law and our regulations as well. Uh, I'll just note that, uh, by last count, the, the, the only, um, nursing home licenses and active ones that we have had in the town, there are three, uh, Nathaniel Witherall, which is somewhat obvious, our town-owned facility, uh, Greenwich Woods at eleven sixty-five King Street, which is operating and privately owned, and Regal Care at Greenwich, which, uh, we, on this meeting, actually, we, we saw the redevelopment proposal, but that was at eleven eighty-eight King Street. And that was closed in twenty twenty-one and has not reopened. So, um, with that, I guess, uh, I'll leave it to the commission for questions.
Yeah, the only question I had is when we looked at the nursing home that was turning into an eight thirty G, does it, does the state statute actually say? Um, it has, it's vacant? Do you guys remember?
It has to be.
Yes, ninety days.
Ninety days, it has to be.
Okay, just all I wanted to ask, because remember when we were doing the other one on King Street? They had the, the plan for closing it?
Hmm.
And relocating the people, and that was kinda.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is, my understanding is that is a operational requirement for, um, nursing homes that are going out of phase or relocating or what have you, those, that there's that relocation of patients or, or tenants that needs to happen.
Okay, alright, um, any other questions or comments on this text amendment? Any questions or comments from the public? Again, this is a text amendment to align us with existing statutes, so, um, if anybody wants to talk about the conversion of nursing homes to residential uses, uh, please raise your virtual hand. I see no raised hands, um, given there's no public comment. Um, does anyone object to us um closing this item at this time?
No.
Alrighty, so this item is therefore closed and we will vote it later. Um, is Sound Beach here tonight?
Yes, and we can send Mr. Basili home to.
Oh, Mr. Basili. Hello, Mr. Oh, good. I'm glad you weren't.
Hello. Yes, I just woke up. Yeah, yes, I will. I'll go. Thank you.
Have a look, um, do something nice with the rest of your evening.
I'll try. I mean, what could be nicer than this? So I'll see what I come up with.
Thank you.
We could start the list, I mean.
Go to the dentist. Bye-bye, Mr. Basili. We'll see you soon.
Bye, see you. See you then.
So um.
Okay, I see uh one representative, but not the other for.
Representing them?
Uh, Mr.
Okay.
I don't know if he was.
There's a nine one four number as well. Could that be?
Uh, yeah, I I thought it was a Monica was coming as well, but I'll let Mark's here. He can handle that, so.
Yeah. I'm sure he knows what to say. All right. So the next thing we have before us is in the discussion items. Um, Sound Beach Holdings LLC for a pre-application review. This is at Joe's and it is to um change their use, Joe's Cafe, I think it's called, Joe's Studio, from retail food establishment to a restaurant use so that they can have additional seasonal outdoor seating without removing indoor seating. Um, and this is at one eight, one eighty-three to one eighty-five Sound Beach Avenue in the LBR two. Mr. Straza, if you would go ahead.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so um per your last discussion um at the last briefing, uh, we took the opportunity to talk to the fire marshal. And um he came back with an email of uh potential seats based upon the floor area that we gave him of forty-two total for a restaurant seating. And also if we decided to have a um standing venue, like take all the seats out and have a um whether it was just a gathering or an art show or something, it would be a hundred and seventy, excuse me, a hundred and twenty-seven seats. Uh, we also reached out to the health department. Um, I have not gotten an email back from them yet, but their two, their concerns was that we had two operable bathrooms, one of which is handicap accessible, the other one is accessible to the public. Um, other than that, that's all we have for your night. We will, we will put together a proposed floor plan, but we would like to have about between twenty-five and thirty seats. We wouldn't try to put forty-two total there.
Um. So so the whole thing about adding, I I'm I'm confused now. So what we have in the application description that the seats would be outside eh without you diminishing inside is not where you're going anymore?
So he's, he definitely, the owner definitely wants to have outdoor dining, though he's permitted to have six seats. We, he would like to have more seating inside. He doesn't want to have to do away with the six seats inside. He's only limited to twelve seats with the takeout.
Well, uh, can he have outdoor dining when he's only retail?
Uh, we we have allowed the retail food as long as they're not extending the twelve.
I had forgotten that.
Six in, six out. That's.
Right, so it's not much for when it's raining outside.
Right.
Um, so therefore, we would like to, he would like to change his status to a restaurant status. He's not changing his menu. He's not changing the way he does business. He's not, he's not changing the food he's selling right now, and he's not changing his hours of operation. So um, like I said, we will, because we've just gotten this information back from the fire marshal, um, we can provide you with a floor plan at the next meeting uh with some seating arrangements between twenty-five and thirty seats.
Well, there was a health, we were asking really what you could do under the health department as well, but.
Yeah, so you go from restaurant, from retail food eh to restaurant with seats. So now you have a seating count that's different that may reflect on the uh food service conditions that you have. I think one of the biggest things is, is, you know, Fire Marshal's talking about the obstructions in egress code, that kind of thing. The health department is gonna look at food service because now you're actually potentially uh serving more food. And they would probably really want to see uh cooking line, storage, so on so forth. And this may change your class. Class one, I think it is, to maybe class two or four.
Look at you, Nick. Attaboy.
Something to be.
Well, I understand, I understand that, and I believe that the owner had already had a restaurant classification prior.
Okay.
And then he was limited to twelve seats, so.
I uh.
So I, as I had the conversation with the health department, um, their concern was that he had two operable bathrooms. Other than that, the way he's doing business is fine as far as they were concerned. He had no violations. So um, again, I.
You're adding seats, so I think you really do, you need to fly that past them about the additional uh additional patrons that you have. And make sure that I see the number of seats and the number of meals per day, so on so forth, and you make that all jive.
Understood. Um, my assistant is, I think, at owning also. I don't know if she has any questions for you. If she can raise her hand.
Oh, she's on the phone. Is she a nine one four number, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, got it. I thought that might be. Um, all right, allowed to talk. Okay, um, when I was gonna. Okay, go ahead. Um, I don't know.
Monica Harris, that's her name.
Oh, hello, hello, Ms. Harris. Did you want to add anything?
Hi there. I apologize. There are so many steps to just be able to talk. Um, Mark basically covered everything, so I appreciate that. Thank you. We just wanted base clarity on what's expected as far as our submission moving forward. Is it a plan just designating the areas for seating versus standing based on the fire, fire marshal's direction? Given that we're not changing the menu, we're not modifying the kitchen equipment or any other.
Right, so we would need the, the ASBIL, the proposed floor plan, full, from front to back of the building uh to scale so we can do the measurements. Uh, typically, the commission's decision is for occupancy is gonna be based on the lowest number between the health code, the building code and the zoning code. Um, your property right now doesn't have any parking, so the decision that the commission would have to make would whether they would uh be willing to increase your seating and increase, if it increases your parking demand or keeping you at a number under the current condition. So uh if we, when we get the 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 numbers, we can talk with staff about what that works out with the regulations. And then there'll be a yield there by square footage. And then once you convert to tables, it's gonna be uh one parking space per three seats or two standing. And then that yield will, if if that yield is greater or equal to the current demand by square footage, it may be considered to be a wash, but if it, if it's increased that demand of parking, then it'd be up to the commission to make a determination that it doesn't, you know, affect things.
Well, can we have some clarity on the parking? Because it's a very high pedestrian area and there isn't necessarily designated parking for this particular space.
It is parking on, yeah, parking on site is all we can count for zoning purposes. So if you have none now, but you have an existing structure, you're, you have a non-conforming condition that exists and you can perpetuate that, but increasing it is something that the commission has to allow and make a decision under special permit.
Okay, so we need to apply for a special permit. And we need to go through zoning, health, and the building department.
You, yeah, the 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 net result and we'll, we will collate or we'll, we'll collect those um reviews as you file it with the application you file with the commission next. So the special permit, we will uh solicit health, we will solicit building uh as a discussion of the um, the floor plan.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, uh, Mr. Straza and Nick, you had a whole bunch of comments yesterday. Do you wanna?
No, I think, I think Mr. Straza understands what's going on. It's not a simple, I'm adding more seats. When you're saying, okay, how many seats? But it actually, it's as Mr. Leroy just said, you know, it's parking, it's fire department, it's uh, it's health department, so on so forth. So for something to return to us, it's actually kind of making sure that you actually get those resolved or in the process of getting those resolved because it it may not work out as you anticipate.
Understood. Um, the only other thing I wanted to add was there are two parking spaces um in the rear that they have for staff, but that's all they have.
Right.
Is it not on the property, Mark, or is it it like in the like a lease kind of situation?
I I believe it's in the property on the back, but I will confirm that with the, with the owner.
And then we can go over, you know, the staff and 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 you and Monica go over the numbers, what we're looking at, so we can, you know what you're getting into.
Okay. All right, I think we're good.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you, many members. Thank you for bringing us.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Goodbye, everybody. No, that isn't, I did the wrong thing. Okay.
All right, goodbye.
Bye. Okey-dokey. Time to make a couple of motions.
Oh.
Oh, wait. So first, first motion is I hereby move we approve the minutes of April twenty-two and uh twenty twenty-five and May six, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Mr. Low has seconded. Um, Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Wells?
Hi.
Mr. Yesky?
Hi.
Mr. Low?
Hi.
Okay, and while I'm on, and I have the microphone, so um it's a real confusion about whether the, that the governor actually did sign that bill today. He has it. He definitely has it. He gets bills by the bunches, but it is unclear and nobody can get a hold of his press office because, you know, it's night.
Well, because Mary contacted him. He's now pulled it back.
Yeah, Mary, I've, Mary wrote a great letter, you guys.
Well, you know, try, try calling at nine o'clock and being told they already can't answer the phone because the volume of calls is so high.
That's great.
Yeah, I know. I love that.
Well, that's why the news that he may have signed it is a little alarming because I feel like there has been a lot of effort to reach him, so.
Yeah, but you know, um, you know, he told Fred that he didn't know of anything. He didn't really understand why we had objections, and he said that at Memorial Day, so.
Maybe you read it.
Well, you know.
Legislature didn't necessarily read it, so why should the governor read?
What do you have a staff for, uh, Nick?
Look who's being cynical, Madam Jenkins.
Not at all, not at all.
All right, can we put our secretary to work now so we can um go chill?
That slacker.
Okay. So Nick, technically, technically, someone told me once that you are not supposed to abstain on P and Z unless it's because you lack information. Now, I don't know if that's true. We should find that out.
Uh, listen, we can all plead to having a lack of information. Certainly that which is processed.
Okay, all right.
We're doing thirty-eight Lake and we're doing uh one three Perry.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. One three Perry Ridge Road, final site plan and special permit, PLPZ twenty twenty-five one zero three. Application for approval to change the use of upper floor of a legally non-conforming medical office to medical education offices, alter driveways and walkways, install two vehicle access control gates on a twelve one thousand square foot property located in the R six zone. Uh, commission finds conservation issue comments dated four thirty twenty-five indicating recommendations to the proposal. ARC issued minutes of their regular uh meeting from four twenty-three twenty-five indicating electronic return with comments. Uh, zoning issue comments dated five two twenty-five indicating no comments to the application. Uh, sewer issue comments dated four thirty twenty-five requesting the applicant to submit sanitary sewer flows and a signed letter acknowledging receipt of their comments. Uh, DPW drainage, applicant submitted a drainage exemption dated uh one six twenty-five. DPW traffic issue comments dated five thirty twenty-five indicating resolution to right-of-way encroachments and resubmit it prior to zoning permit. And wetlands issue department needs questionnaire dated uh two twenty-six twenty-five indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the application for final site plan and special permit with the following conditions. Per ARC comments, uh, reduce the width of the curb cut entrance, proposed gate and single-way vehicular float, which allows the opportunity to increase the grass panel adjacent to the street and sidewalk. Uh, the low metal railing along the parking on the right side of the property and the black metal fence, the parking lane should be removed and replaced with landscaping. Uh, applicant should submit confirmation that proposed sloping sidewalks meet code for ADA accessibility. And per the sewer division comments, applicant has submitted a letter dated uh five twenty-eight twenty-five had now written comments and has uh provided flow information. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second for that motion or any adds to it? No, no second?
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded.
No, that seems to water.
I'm, you're gonna just abstain. Um, hold on. I'm just making sure I got the seating in front of me. Yep, okay. Um, so, Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Low?
Hi.
Mr. Yesky?
Hi.
Mr. Wells?
Hi.
And Albin is also eyeing with that the motion passes five nothing.
Okay, thirty-eight Lake Avenue, final separation, special permit, PLPZ two oh two five one zero four. Applicant is seeking approval to modify the existing non-conforming use medical office to another non-conforming use office for the underlying zone and make related site improvements on a eight thousand six hundred square foot parcel located in the RF zone. Uh, whereas the subject has eleven parking spaces, the existing use requires eighteen point seven five, seven five spaces. The proposed change to general office would require ten point two spaces, thereby reducing parking deficiency. Conservation issue comments uh dated uh five one twenty-five indicating recommendations to the proposal. Zoning issue comments on five two twenty-five indicating no issues with the application. ARC issued minutes of their regular meeting on five twenty-three indicating electronic return with comment. Sewer issued comments dated four thirty twenty-five requesting the applicant to submit sanitary sewer flows and a signed letter acknowledging receipt of their P and Z comments. EPW drainage, applicant submitted a drainage exemption dated uh two twenty-one twenty-five. And DPW traffic issued comments dated five thirty indicating resolution of right-of-way encroachments and resubmit it prior to zoning permit. And wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire dated uh twelve four twenty-four indicating no action required. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the application for final site plan and special permit with the following conditions. For the sewer division comment, the applicant has submitted a letter uh dated five twenty-eight per twenty-five acknowledging comments and adding uh sewer flows as requested. Per ARC comments, applicant knows that proposal windows are to be replaced with in kind, P and Z uh staff to confirm. ARC recommends that two existing vents within the roof to be removed or relocated to the rear of the design. And ARC satisfied with the recognition of reconfiguration of the parking area with existing tree canopy. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Yesky?
Hi.
Mr. Low?
Hi.
Mr. Wells?
Hi.
Albin is also eyeing with that the motion passes five nothing. Okey-dokey. We're done.
No, we're not.
What do we have? Oh, we got the one more text amendment. Yep, okey-dokey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ar.
Thank you, Ar. All right, um, Nick, I know you're ready on this one.
Uh, which one? That was the energy?
No. No, we did the energy. Arne was excited about it. I wanted to do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, text amendment, nursing homes, PLPZ twenty twenty-five one seven seven. Uh, there's only text amendment seeks to amend language in section six five A definitions, uh, six one thirteen site plan approval required by planning and zoning and six ninety-three permitted uses in the RA four et cetera zones. The amendment is intended to reference and remove any conflicting language of the town's building zone regulations in accordance with the state law. Uh, Public Act twenty-four one four three effective October first of twenty twenty-four. This law permits the conversion of any existing nursing home into a multifamily housing and has been codified in title eight, chapter one twenty-four, section eight two R of the Connecticut general statutes. Additionally, section one six three site plan approval uh is to be amended to include the new subsection eleven, which refers to the conversion of vacant nursing homes to multifamily housing permitted and subject to summary review under the state statutes. Finally, section six ninety-three permitted uses in the RA four et cetera zones to be amended to reference the conversion of vacant nursing homes uh to multifamily housing as resident zones as we're nursing homes where are currently permitted by special warrant. Uh, the commission finds that. Uh, the commission finds that Westco commented that the amendment is of local interest. And the text amendment is in keeping with guiding principles two, objective two point one A, two point four B of the two thousand nineteen P O C D. Therefore, motion to approve the text amendment as proposed.
Second.
Could I have a second?
Sorry, second.
Okay, Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. McCray, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Wells?
Hi.
Mr. Yaski?
Hi.
Mr. Low?
Hi.
Albin is also eye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. All right.
Okay, and I think actually just uh, in the previous motion for the energy guiding principle four, objective four point two A, B, C, and Q of the P O C D.
Oh, yeah, we forgot to do that for the um, energy one.
I just did, so we're good.
Yeah, okay. So, just, just so.
Principle, principle four, objective four point two A, B, C, and Q.
Q. Thank you.
So those of you without lives but are pro uh, rink, there is the meeting tomorrow night at six thirty. Those of you who want to honor our chairwoman, that's at a different location at six thirty also. Um, the League of Women Voters is honoring our distinguished chair with a community service award, as you all know.
Uh, I just have to say that I'm going to be at an A R C meeting, getting beat up by them, so I will have to uh, miss on both of them.
You're not allowed to.
We'll understand. We'll know.
You can't, you can't, you can't represent.
I'm not representing. I just have to be there.
Okay, yeah, because you're not allowed to.
It's against the law.
But we're all going to write, run for the state legislature. We're all, we're just going to shut down the Planning and Zoning Commission between January and June. And we're all going to go on the state legislature. Oh, we can only one go on. We'll put Patrick on it.
Jeez, I, I thought you liked me.
You have to look and see if they're still there right now. They must be, right?
Exactly. You sound better. I hope you're feeling better, right?
I, it's so invigorating spending, spending six hours with you guys, five hours.
Mr. Mr. Low, the uh, the rink meeting, is that being recorded?
There's a Zoom meeting, the what? Yeah, so I don't know if it'll be recorded. They don't, they don't always post. These kinds of meetings don't always post. They have a Zoom link, but then they don't record and post.
Right. I, it's more, more curiosity to see what's being proposed.
Well, Mr. Low, you can, you can disabuse me of this. I think it's to go over the, the scoring sheet that, that's going to be used to assess the, the parcels, right?
It's gonna be, it's, uh, that's, yes, that, that's true. It's to bring the public up to date on what has been uh, going on with, within the rink committee.
Right. So there won't be a session of, of exact lots, right? There's, there's what, I, at least that's what Matt told me, but you can.
So just, just review the score sheet.
Yeah, you, you mean the chair of the, of the task force? Yeah, he, he doesn't always tell the truth. No, no, he's been great. I, I'm kidding.
That's consistent with a lot of chairmanships.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, no, no. Yeah, whatever he said is spot on. But I, I think it is to, to um, open it up to the public, let the public ask questions and uh, and, and give everyone a, just a status update.
Peter, is this the first time public speaking?
Yes.
Wow, hold on to your hat.
Well, when you say speaking, I mean, there, there's been feedback via electronic communication, et cetera.
So I'm, yeah, talking about, you know, the public in the room, that kind of thing. It's going to be.
Yeah.
But you know, Deschamp is very good at that. I've watched him in heated situations. Um, on C D B G, it got really heated. And it was Deschamp on one side of the room and Lucia Jansen disagreeing.
Well, that's not a fair.
Oh, wow. So we're gonna miss that?
Such calmness. It was really, he's very good at getting everybody to just focus on the task. He really did a beautiful job. Very good at it. Very good at, at um, meetings and his participation, right? That's your take, right? Yeah.
And you're going to be talking about your mother, right?
Okay, so my mom was. My mom was a management consultant and her specialization was large group change. And she was all about having all the stakeholders at the table. Okay, so when my mom was not like.
Corn just did.
Just kind of like stuck right by the tree. So my mom is not going to be a conversation about cookies. She never sent cookies ever.
And this was, this was down south.
Um, no, we moved to the States.
Okay.
The southern states.
No, New York City. We moved to the States. So talking about my mom is, you know.
Apple pie.
So there you are. Anyway, but thanks to all you guys for. Um, and y'all um, have a good time at the rink meeting.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I have to cut the baby in half because.
All right.
I'm on both.
Oh, I know, um, now that we're kind of alone, uh, Sunday.
Not really. The press is here, just so you know.
That's fine. Yeah, they'll, they'll find this funny too. Sunday, June twenty-second. Uh, I am playing the Levitt Pavilion in Westport with a bunch of Broadway guys.
Oh, cool. If it's a nice. Last year, right?
Yeah, if it's a nice summer night, it's, forget us, you're, it's nice to be sitting out on the lawn having too much wine.
Oh, yeah, that would be cool.
So if anybody wants to go, let me know.
Okay, we'll try. Is it the night before a P and Z meeting? That's all we care about.
Probably.
Okay, well.
Well, I would definitely come if it's the night of a P and Z.
It actually is not. It is actually not the night before a P and Z meeting.
The twenty-second, isn't it?
No, we mean on seventeen.
Oh, wait, wait, that's the weekend after, right?
Yeah.
Twenty to fifty-six, twenty-eight.
So you sailors are on leave. You're on short, you know, so.
Oh, is, are you playing on the twenty-second?
Yes, I'm playing on the twenty-second, Sunday evening, or afternoon or whatever it is. I don't know what I'm playing, but I'm playing.
So um, for the geeks here on legislation, the bill that the House passed on the conversions is fourteen forty-four, which is not, the language is not in five oh oh two. Okay. So we need to look at that. I, it, the Senate passed fourteen forty-four at like midnight, no, no, because at like seven o'clock on Saturday night.
Uh, also, I just saw the mayor, what, excuse me, selectman of Westport.
Yeah, the first selectman, yeah.
She, she wrote something too, another ripping letter.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's a whole thread of, of CEOs that was writing tonight. And the Connecticut Council of Municipalities came out objecting to what had been passed into the revisions. But all we know is that it's been transmitted and waiting the governor's signature, so we see what happens.
There is also the uh, the Cost Group, uh, Council of Small Towns and
I love her.
Bridgeport uh, City Council.
I missed Betsy's letter. I would, if she sent out another email, I would love to see it.
I haven't seen the lower one, but.
Oh.
There was one.
Her email last week was great. I shared that one a lot.
There's a lot of, um, a lot of different groups, so to speak, that are aligned with the concerns that we've all sort of expressed.
Bridgeport City Council is against this too. That's interesting.
Oh, and, and the best speech on Saturday night was Minnie Gonzalez, who's from Hartford. She was in the Senate. She was fantastic because she's opposed to. But um, Bridgeport Whole City Council voted against the, because of the parking. Um, but Cost, um, the Council of Small Towns is headed by Betsy Gara, and she's, I've never met her in person, but boy, she grabs all the issues and sends great communications out about all sorts of issues for small towns. She's really. I know you probably know her, right, Trace?
I know, I've never met her, but I've certainly, we, you know, in Weston, we relied on their materials a lot, so they've always been very good.
Yeah, she's just been, and.
Reading, Reading does too. I know the first select woman of Reading follows that group as well.
To be honest, um, this bill is really tough on the small towns because they don't have the resources to do some of the stuff they're being asked to do. Um, like, because zoning won't be able to do health and safety. So who's going to do it in a small town? Where you don't have the resources. So it's going to be, there's a whole bunch of stuff in the bill that as you read it, you say, our small town's going to do all this. And there was a great, I forget who wrote it today, that said the bureaucracy that's being added is amazing. This is what we need. Well, this is how they felt thirty-five years ago, right?
Yeah.
It's not as bad as that.
Yeah.
I think it's worse.
No, I, you know, we're, we're thoughtful. We'll figure stuff out. We'll figure out how to move forward. One of the things that we can do is we can set our own fair share target. But we have to give a rationale why it's the right thing, and we have a very short time to do it. So it's one of the things that we need to go reach out to the region about probably as well.
And, and we've talked about this. There's some shals and mays that are being, uh, that show up and things, so, you know, it, it changes some of the complexity.
So we need to really go through it with a fine tooth comb because the shallow and may is a big deal.
Yeah.
All right, I'm making you nuts with all of this, so let's go party.
I, I, I vote for May.
All right, bye-bye, you guys.
All right, good night.